Yeah, it looks like a big old halo around my face there. From the.
Not a halo around me.
No.
Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yes, can you hear me?
Big old halo around my face there.
Very loud.
From the.
Okay.
No.
Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yes, can you hear me?
That's how the Zoom will look and all have.
Gary, we're live.
Very loud.
Okay.
We're live. Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yes, can you hear me?
That's how the Zoom will look and all have.
Gary, we're live.
Very loud.
Okay.
We're live.
So we're getting a delay.
Can you hear me, Chuck?
Yes, can you hear me? Gary, we're live.
Very loud.
Okay.
You're too excited about seeing people.
So we're getting a delay.
Raise my shoe. Gary's.
So we're getting a delay.
Raise my shoe. Gary's.
If you're just tuning in, we have about one minute and we're just working out some technical difficulties. Carol will let me know when we're ready. Again, if you're just tuning in, we're working out some technical difficulties. We'll be getting started soon. You're good? All right, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our first meeting in our brand new chambers here in Desert Hot Springs. We are not with a live audience, but any, any, we do have some limited staff members here. We do have our full council here. As you can see, we're COVID, I don't want to knock these over, but we have a COVID protection with these screens on all sides of the city council members and between our staff members that you cannot see because they're off camera. We do have a TV with a large camera set up in front of us so that we can listen to comments, public comments, and see other staff members that are not in the room give their presentations and anyone else invited to the meeting. I hope that explains where we're at and being safe with each other. You will see some members wearing masks. If you might see them around City Hall, it is a policy within City Hall. But while sitting at the dais with these barriers, we won't be wearing masks so that you can hear us clearly. With that said, I am going to call to order the City of Desert Hot Springs regular meeting of the City Council and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Present.
And Mayor Manis.
Present. At this time, we are going to have an invocation. We have Reverend Matt Dudley from, he's a pastor of the Christian Center here in Desert Hot Springs, and he's going to give our invocation. I don't think we can hear you.
Thank you.
There we go. Go ahead.
That during complex and difficult times, we can look to you for guidance and wisdom. And so, Lord, while we see an increasingly divided time in our nation, I pray, Lord, that you would give wisdom to our city, to our city leadership, to work in ways that are united, moving forward the issues and concerns of our city. God, we're thankful for them. We pray, God, tonight, that above all else, as we continue through this time of pandemic, that you would set hearts and minds at ease and that, Lord, you would bring an end to this pandemic. We thank you, that we can trust you, that we look to you. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance tonight, Mr. Councilmember Gardner, got a little bit of echo going there. Councilmember Gardner, since you're closest to the flag, why don't we start with you, leading us in the pledge? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. It's time to move to the city attorney's report on closed session. Ms. Murray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have no reportable action.
Very fair. At this time, we'll move to the approval of the agenda. At this time, the city council may amend the order of the agenda and will approve the consent calendar in whole. Is there anything on the consent calendar that needs to be removed by anybody?
Mr. Mayor, just want to note that anywhere that I might have been recused on a previous agenda item, it's been so long that I'll be recusing on those items on consent also.
That, items 14 through, I got my fingers to work today. 19 is 14 through 24 on the consent calendar. I don't hear anybody else. I'll accept the motion to approve, including the consent calendar. No, I'm sorry. Do we have any public comments on the consent calendar?
No, we do not.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the agenda as posted.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So passes. I'm sorry. We have a new voting system. I didn't get the, we didn't even get to vote on it, did we?
No, that's fine.
We do have a whole new system here. Just to explain again, we will be working out the bugs throughout the evening. For the most part, we've all been trained on how to use it and we'll, we'll try to do that as time goes on. Well, now we've moved into public comments. At this time, pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the city council and shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional courteous decorum during public comments. Ms. Ernik, do we have public comments?
Yes. Andrew Washington?
Mr. Washington, you can unmute yourself and begin your comments. You have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Okay. I have a project here in Desert Hot Springs at Eagle Point, and I built a couple of houses in the county here in Desert Hot Springs. And concerning the building code, and when I, on the, on the projects in the county, they automatically let the, they extended the permits to the end of the year. And I'm just, I'm bringing this question to the city council. Every other city has automatically extended that, but Desert Hot Springs. And so, I would like to see if city council could vote on that. Do they have that authority to vote on that? Because it would really help, because with COVID and the hardship, it just really limits the amount of building we can do. Because we have to endure that extra cost, update the plans and so forth. And my question is, why is Desert, the city here, Desert Hot Springs, different from every other principality as far as that, in that area of the building code?
We thank you for your comments. Due to California law, we cannot have a back and forth conversation, but I do have staff members that are nodding their head that they've taken your information and will be in contact with you to get the process for you to be able to move forward on that. Thank you for your.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next public comment, please.
Yes, it's Jay Hyde.
Don't see that.
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, there you are, Jay. Yes, we can hear you now. Go right ahead.
Good evening to you all. So it's no surprise I have a project at 66309 Second Street. And I've been in good communication, I would say, with Dan Oras and Keith Hightower. And I formerly met Rebecca recently. Well, I don't have any disagreements with them per se. I just want to talk about, I, I just think it's unfair that I made a mistake by submitting my plans and going through the whole process of plan check and only to come to find out that there were some prerequisites that I needed to get done beforehand. And just honestly, I, I didn't, I didn't know because this is not, I'm not, this is not my regular practice of building homes in that city per se or in any, any other city. But the fact of the matter is that my plans have been going on through this whole COVID process and they haven't been able to postpone. My plans expired. They destroyed my plans after a third set of corrections. And I, I, I like the last guy who just spoke. I just feel like, you know, we should be given some type of break. And recently, I was offered a discount to resubmit for plan check with a new code. And like the gentleman just said, there have to be updates. And I, I, I took the liberty of updating my plans to meet some of those 2019 codes when I first initially started, just proactively. But to revise my plans and financially, the burden sum is, is heavy right now. And I, and to, to be honest with you, I feel a little insecure to even submit or pay any other fees now that I lost money with the city, even though, you know, they said that I, I was supposed to do something else first, but yet they accepted my money, went through the whole process. And it's been very hard to talk to someone like you would normally go in and talk to someone and, and you would get these things resolved. And, you know, the city has curtailed their hours, limited their services, postponed other things, but yet they won't postpone or give me a break on this plan check. And, and it's not, it's not on Keith or Rebecca, but the fact of the matter is that, you know, I'm seeking relief from the city council and the wigs of the city to really intervene and really look at this and try to help us builders so that we're not, I mean, everyone's going through a tough circumstance. This only makes it worse. That's all I can say this evening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time. Again, we have staff members taking your information down and we'll have someone in contact with you. Any other public comments?
Yes, Chris Ephiani.
Chris, you need to unmute yourself? There you go. You're all set.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Thank you for having me. Basically, on behalf of some investors that I work for, they submitted the plans prior to 2019 building code. And so basically, we did everything we're supposed to do and planned to pull the permits before this pandemic came upon all of us. And we went by the code, we followed the California building code. I did everything that they've hired me to do and requested for extensions and submitted them to the city. And this is the same thing we have projects in other cities as well, in Los Angeles, Los Angeles County and Riverside County and some other, like little cities in Los Angeles, Downey and Culver City and all that. So basically, they all got extensions from those cities in light of the change. But Desert Hot Springs is the only one that I reported back to them that they did not give the extension. They asked me why. I'm like, I don't know. So maybe this is beyond staff. They said, well, they would like the city council to review the matter because according to the California building code, it states if a situation is beyond your control, you should request for the extension. But they did not understand why all these sort of municipalities, and some of them actually they got a year that they did it and Desert Hot Springs doesn't want to do it. So they just want council to look at the matter and make a decision. And because it will cost them an additional $25,000 to $30,000, which they did not budget for, for those particular plans and the loans and the commitments they got prior. They have new plans that they will be working on, but those ones are different criteria. So they just want the city council to look, to take the matter up and look at it. And they would like them to extend and give them some time to be able to accomplish those projects because they've done a lot of projects in the city and they're doing affordable housing. So they just think it's fair because if the, the extension is not granted and they're forced to do the 2019 code, they will not be able to financially make those project, those projects work. So that's pretty much what they would like for, for me to bring up to the attention of the city council and hopefully they can put it in an agenda item, maybe on the subsequent meetings, and let them take the decision. And because that's what other cities have done and they are, they're doing that in other cities. So that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other public comments?
Yes, I had Manuel Hernandez, but I do not see him on my list of being on Zoom, so.
Okay. If we do see him come in, just let me know. We can go back. Know their comments?
Uh, no, that is all.
All right, we'll close public comments right now and go to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'd like, as usual, to have Jeffrey, our finance director, give a report on our current financial status.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As of August 31st, the consolidated general fund for fiscal year 1920 has received $22.4 million in revenues and we have $21.475 million in expenditures. So we're currently estimating that the ending fund balance for the consolidated general fund will be over $11.4 million, which will be, actually, it'll be $11,450,000, which will just preliminary unaudited numbers and they could possibly change. So, but at this point, I'm estimating an ending fund balance of over $11.4 million for fiscal year. And then as for, because of the dispenser revenues, I'm estimating one, over $1.1 million to be transferred to the marijuana reserve, the 25, funded by 25% of cannabis taxes, which would make the cannabis reserve almost $2.5 million. For fiscal year 2021, we, so far, we have $719,000 in revenues and about $3.5 million in expenditures. The expenditures are so high because we have the, all the insurance premiums and the PERS side fund payment that all paid in July. So there are several, there, you know, several large expenditures that are paid at the beginning of the fiscal year. But the other expenditures are on track. As for some of the revenues, the resident revenues receive on a regular basis, such as building permits, planning fees. After two months, which is about 17% of the fiscal year, we, those revenues are tracking at about between 15 and 18% of what is budgeted. For the month of July, for the dispensary revenues, we've actually, the city has received, as of today, we've received $184,000 in the dispensary revenue taxes, which is $56,000 more than what was received for July in 2019. As for our TOT, the transient occupancy taxes for July, the city has received almost $80,000, which is $8,800 less than what was received in, for July 2019, that last year. So it looks like our revenues are, revenues are, at this point, seem to be pretty on track. And that is the end of my report.
Thanks, Jeffrey. And I'd like now to turn to Danny to give an update on Palm Drive and Pearson.
I don't think he can hear you, Chuck. Danny, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you give your report on Palm Drive and Pearson, Danny?
Yes. The Palm Drive street lighting and safety improvement project, all the infrastructure is complete. The only item that is missing are the streetlights. The streetlight footings were completed a couple of weeks ago and there has been several streetlights already installed on the northbound lane from Tubunch to Desert View. The remaining streetlights will be installed the rest of September and we expect to have them all energized by the end of October. We also had traffic signals installed. We had a brand new traffic signal on Palm Drive and Desert View, which is currently in operation. And we have a brand new one on Pearson and Choya, which became in operation last Wednesday. Both of them are working good. We are doing some finishing touches, but they are functioning in property order. We also completed a, or are completing a citywide LED streetlight conversion project where all of our streetlights are going to be converted from high-pressure sodium, the yellow lighting, to LED, which will be brighter, save energy and last longer, reducing the cost from the city for operation and maintenance. We have already completed over 700 streetlights and there are only a few left to complete, but you will see LED streetlights all over the city by the end of October. That concludes my update. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it. In the wake of the fact that we received three complaints on the same type of issue at the beginning of this meeting and public comment, can our, I'm going to have assistant city manager Dory Wilms address those real quick with some additional assistance she needs from Rebecca Deming, our community development director, and Keith Hightower, building official.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council. I am very familiar with all three of the circumstances that were spoken about at the beginning of the meeting. Although Chris is the only one that knows me directly, Mr. Washington and Mr. Hyde, I'm very aware of what's going on there. So I'm going to talk more generically, though, about the, the building code update instead of honing in on these three specific circumstances. So we updated our building code to the 2019 building code. And all of our developers were notified that they had until January 1st of 2019 to get their plans in and submitted to go through plan check in order to still fall underneath the 2016 building code. They were also made aware at the end of the year that they had six months to go through the plan check process, get their permits in hand to still be eligible to comply with the 2016 building code. If they were unable to get through plan check and get their actual permits in their hand by June 30th, they would unfortunately need to update all of their building plans to the 2019 building code. And I have been very strict with the community development staff, Keith and Rebecca can speak to this, about ensuring that that communication was really, really expressed to the developers. Obviously, during this process, COVID-19 took place. And so, as we approached the June 30th deadline, we had several developers, these, these are not the only three. We had several developers approach us. They were either, you know, nearing plan check and we worked with folks as we could. Once June 30th hit, though, unfortunately, because this is a California building code requirement, there was, there was a little bit of gray earth for me, not for Keith, but for me, as to what authority we had to go beyond that deadline that California had in place. Keith knew what it was, but he humored me when I asked him to reach out to the state of California and ask them if in light of COVID, we had the ability to do an extension for the 2019, to allow people to still function underneath the 2016 building code. And they came back and unequivocally said, absolutely not. We have no authority. Now, I know that a couple of people have made reference to other cities extending out plan checks. And I think that, quite frankly, there's some confusion as to what city and jurisdictions are capable of doing versus what the state is allowing us to do with respect to the code update. Several cities, and we have done this with some of our developers as needed, there is a, and Keith, I'm going to kick it to you in just a minute so you can talk to this a little bit more specifically. But for regular plan checks, when you take out the code, the, the code update, we do have a period of time that we ask people to pull permits by. And after that point, we do cancel out the, the application. We have the ability to, to be flexible there. Keith has some additional extensions he can provide. Unfortunately, with respect to the code update from 2016 to 19, I asked them to check and California was very firm that they were not allowing extensions in light of COVID. So with that, Keith, can you speak to what you do have a flexibility on with respect to the application process for building permits, please?
Yeah, very well said, Doria. The flexibility that we have written into the Desert Hot Springs municipal code is that during plan check, the building code allows 180-day process to get through plan check. That's actually six months' time. And normally, people say they're in plan check for a year or nine months or something, when actually, they're only in plan check the 10-day turnaround time and the five days for rechecks. The rest of the time is the responsibility of the designers, the builders, the developers. And in my experience, that's been more than enough time to get through the plan check process. I've been through five code cycles in my career already and they've all been processed the very same way. But of course, this, this cycle, we did hear a lot more about the COVID and what allowances that the state was willing to forgive. So we did reach out to the California Building Standards Commission and they had not issued any waivers. The, the 2019 code is the current code of the state of California and it has been since January 1st. We give 180-day grace period that's very generous in order to move people into, from the 2016 to the 2019 code for projects that are ongoing that were submitted prior to the beginning of the year. The commercial projects, we didn't get a lot of pushback on it this year. Most of the experienced builders know that this is what happens every, every code cycle. This is a new experience for me to have a lot of pushback from residential builders. And the reason for the change in codes is California mandates that we build more energy-efficient houses every, every code cycle. And so, most of the changes to the new code is a energy savings for the homeowner and there has to be a cost analysis done for things that are added into the energy code. And they get the, the homeowner will get the payback of the extra cost over a period of time. By us continuing to build houses under the 2016 code, not only is the homeowner getting an inferior product, but we're also violating the rules of California and enforcing the current code. We're, we're mandated by the state to enforce the current codes.
If I just may add that, I want to make it clear that our application includes the information on the six-month timeframe. So each person, when they apply for their building permit, does sign a document understanding that they have that's the six-month timeframe to complete their plan check process.
And that notification is also on every plan check correction list. It's on the back of the application where they sign. We've, we've gone through every possible means of pre-notification. We even started notifying last October, November, that the code cycle change was coming up.
And then the last thing that I just want to add is, you know, in any area that we can work with developers, we will. Unfortunately, with this code update, this is one of the areas that I'm unable to step in and make allowances. If there is other types of issues that we need to work with developers on, we are more than willing to come to the table and do that and have done that. And unfortunately, this, like. this, like I said, just isn't one of them.
Thank you, Doria, Rebecca, Keith, that's all I had, sir.
And because it's not an agenda item, we're not allowing questions from the council at this time, but the council knows that they can speak with staff directly if they have other questions regarding this. We'll move on to mayor's and council members' comments. We don't have a queue for us to put our names in, so I'll be calling on people. I'm going to start at this end, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Getting used to all of this here and finding where I put my notes, but it is good to be back and nice to see everybody in our new council chambers. I sure miss seeing people in person, and I wanted to thank our residents this summer for being as conscientious and diligent in mask-wearing and social distancing. As I go out and about in the city, I'm going to guesstimate that our compliance with that is running around 80% to 90%, if not higher. And unfortunately, we'll have to keep this up for a while, but the longer and the better we do it, the shorter time we'll all have to endure it, and our little jeopardy shields here for final jeopardy will come down. I have no report on any outside meetings since our last one. I did want to note just a couple of things. The new stoplight at Choya and Pearson is activated, along with the new crosswalks, and that is going to be a huge safety improvement, once the high school kids start going back to school, and it's going to slow traffic along Pearson. And since it's a new light, I want everyone just to be cautious, pay attention till everybody gets used to it. And then, one last quick note. Wanted to welcome Royal Emerald to the city. Been watching as that has progressed down there in the old Kmart building. Very exciting, such good news for the city. They chose to come to Desert Hot Springs because of our reputation and our experience in cannabis, the new jobs that are coming, the expansion of their corporate offices, their commitment to our town is absolutely fantastic. So I just wanted to thank them for coming, and I wanted to congratulate the mayor and our city staff, who have all worked so hard in making it happen, and welcome to the city. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. By.
Okay. I wanted to announce that the cooling center on
Estrella.
Esque. He said it. That is doing well. I stopped by there today, and one of the things that the person in charge wanted me to tell all of the community, how well the community has been providing help. Every day, they say someone from the community shows up and is giving supplies, and that's a big deal for our community. Also, I want to talk about, it's very important that you vote. There are a couple of us that are putting out, they're putting out fact sheets on Facebook, and they're putting out a Zoom response, where it is about the ballots that are being set forth on November 3rd. The ballot is educational and nonpartisan. There are no local elections on, and there are no national elections on. It's just the 12 ballot measures. And for me, there are people that are protesting and still protesting, but what are you going to do after the protests? And for me, this is something that you can do, to get involved in the mix, to help effect change. And that's all I wanted to say about that. The other thing that the community can help us with is 2020 census. This is going to give us, not just the council, but all of the community, good stuff. Over the, then, what they're going to do, they're going to change the congressional district, which is true, but it's also will allow allocation to our city and to the county, Medicare, Head Start, block grants for community mental health services, nutrition assistance program, and SNAP. It also will help businesses to make decisions, and they will be making decisions on opening new stores, restaurants, factories, or offices, and where to expand operations. And so, this can help us. It's not just because we want it, we all need it, and you can help us move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a pleasure to be in our new digs. I'm enjoying this. For those of you who watch regularly, you know that I'm not going to have my little buddy here smacking me on the face, which maybe I'll miss, but maybe I won't. It was a very quick summer. I was kind of excited after the last council meeting that we had this stretch of time off, and for some reason, it didn't seem to be like I had a lot of time off. I did attend a C-VAG board meeting, and also Desert Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce meeting. Those were my two meetings over the summer. Nothing major, just seemed to go really, really fast. Very happy to see, at least when I go out, a lot of people are mask-wearing. I know that's an item of contention with some people, but if you don't do it for yourself, do it for your loved ones. It's something we're going to have to get stuck with. I don't necessarily like them, and I seem to have a problem with mine because they break all the time. So I always have to carry extras, so at least carry an extra, just in case it breaks. That's really all I have to say, just kind of happy. I'll be happy when we can have people in person. This is a beautiful facility. I think, I'm looking forward to the day we can have a little grand opening or something, and the public can come in and see this. It is your building, and I want everyone to enjoy it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I want to say that, you know, as you watch this building go up, you see the construction and the, you know, the workers that do their normal routine part of putting up a building like this, and then you look around at the detail that's gone into making this work. Everywhere you look, somebody has put in some thought to the design and the effort into making this thing just really, really nice. It could have just been a building, but it's not. It's exceptional, and I want to compliment staff. Just everywhere I look, I see some detail that took a lot of thought, a lot of planning, a lot of effort, and I hope that there'll be proper recognition for some grand opening. And I'm sure when the public comes here, who regularly attends our meetings and sees this facility, they're going to say that, you know, wow, this is, Desert Hot Springs is well-represented now, and we're certainly well-represented by the staff. Getting into my comments, you know, it's a long time off, but like Robert said, busy. I'll try not to take too long here, but, you know, some issues have come up during this time. One is vacation rentals, and if you take a look at what Cathedral City did, you know, they're actually taking steps towards getting rid of the vacation rentals. You know, and the question is, how can you make them work without getting rid of them altogether? Next door to me, I had great neighbors who were, you know, used their house as a vacation rental. We've got another one around the block. Never been a problem, always been quiet. It was nothing more than the normal conversation that you would hear across the fence if your neighbor was there. But we do have other residents who have been contacting us now with some vacation rentals that have become problems, constant parties. And I've, as they've called me, I've said, "Call me when it's happening." Well, I maybe shouldn't have put out that offer, but so at 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, I'm standing in somebody's yard, listening to this raging party going on next door. So, and they're saying it's going on, you know, every other night. Says, "Well, as soon as they leave, somebody else is going to be back." So we've got to take a look at some things. I've talked to staff on this one, presented some ideas, and I'm hoping that we get something to come back to council, that staff will bring that back to us, that will put in a couple of ideas that might help. Cities like Big Bear have put in ordinances on parking restrictions, occupancy restrictions, and some things like that, so hopefully, we can bring that back as an agenda item. We've got a new convenience store, looking to go in at Mission Lakes Marketplace. That's on Little Morongo and Mission Lakes Boulevard, and everybody in the area is real excited about that. I think they put their application in, in April, if I got my information correct, and we're at May, June, July, August, September. Maybe it was May they put it in, I don't know, but, you know, I would like to find out what it is that's holding this up and see if we can get this moving along. And what made me think about it was, I was driving around with my grandson, and we happened to drive through the shopping center. He says, "Hey, grandpa, I thought there was a store coming in here." And I said, "Well, yeah, there is." So if we could get something to come back to the council to let us know, you know, when do we anticipate that that store will be able to have its ribbon cutting? And, you know, I think that's a goal that we all need to have when we have an applicant like this, and so if I could get something to come back from staff on that at the next meeting, that'd be great. Hopefully, it won't be that long, but I guess we'll meet in a couple of weeks, right? So I guess it won't be that long. I want to compliment the economic development staff for the work they've been doing. They had sent down a notice to the businesses, like I think they all have, about a grant opportunity, and so I got a call, "Hey, can you help me figure out how to do this?" They're a business owner, they don't know how to do a grant. I made some calls around, I couldn't find anybody that knew how to do the grant, so I ended up kind of taking it on myself. I wrote the proposal for them, and then they said, "Okay, great, but there's a video that's needed." So the next thing you know, I'm editing a video, filming and editing a video for them. Anyhow, it turned out good, and it's just, you know, it's one of those things where you get sucked in and you get super busy. Also had a lot of requests from the local restaurants. If you take a drive down Palm Canyon and Palm Springs, it looks really busy. Everybody's doing outdoor dining, and we've had a couple of our establishments who have looked in and said, "Well, you know, they're all locked up. They're feeling like they aren't supposed to do what they're doing in Palm Springs." And, you know, Palm Springs is taking a very get-tough attitude. So I'm just trying to think, maybe staff could reach out and make it clear to them what they can do and can't do, as far as, you know, usually, we're very good about going around and letting them know, "Hey, guys, sorry, that's not allowed. We did that really well." Maybe we could get out to some of these places, you know, the bars that are now doing the turned-in-to-bar and grills, and the restaurants that want to do outside dining. Maybe if we could get out there more proactively, let them know, "Hey, here's what you can do." And to the extent that I have been able to do that, you know, some of them are looking for food, service, and other things, so hopefully, we can take care of that. Anyhow, so, you know, and the good news in all this is that we've wanted outdoor dining for a long time, along Palm Drive, like Palm Springs has, and, you know, some of the outgrowths of some of this adversity we're going through is, well, now maybe we're going to have that. Speaking of new opportunities, we have a new bicycle shop in town, so hopefully, everybody stop in. It's really nice to see that lively activity, very good addition. And then, of course, the Royal Emerald. Fantastic, there's a, you know, they put out a notice on the news to do a job fair, and I think every one of us got a bunch of phone calls, "Oh, well, how do I apply?" And we hadn't heard anything in advance on that from them. They just put that on the news, it took all of us by surprise also. Anyhow, you know, I did call them, and I find out that what they're saying to do is to go to their website. And staff, have you got anything more on that to let us know exactly, so we can let people know here what they're supposed to do if they want to apply for those jobs?
So the website is royalemeraldrx.com, and folks that had questions can also reach out to them at 858-864-8185.
Okay. All right. So, but they, and I guess they have some more stringent requirements. You have to do a pretty stringent background check, as I understand, but those are good-paying jobs at $43,000 a year, and, you know, there was some mention here earlier about how that came about, and I think what people don't realize is there was some proaction by the city council a couple of, three years prior, to make sure zoning was in place. And while a lot of cities were vying for this, four other cities wanted this, we, they came to us and said, "We need to be in there quickly." And we said, "You know what? Well, guess what? We took care of the zoning ahead of time to make sure that when you needed to move in quickly, you could." And so this council, way back when, was very, very proactive to make sure that if some opportunity came along like this, and we didn't know what it would be, but if some opportunity came along, that they would be able to move in here. So I know staff worked really hard to move that through, but this council can feel very, very good about getting that done. The other good news is, sorry, and I'm almost done here, the Mission Creek Preserve. I know there was a big concern, you know, about a lot of people in the community about preserving the entrance to Sand to Snow and the entrance to Mission Creek Preserve, and there was a developer who had plans to plop Orange County right in the middle of that, and I think it did get approval, but then got backed out in a settlement, in a court case, and really happy that the conservation group stepped up to the plate, reached out to that developer and said, "Hi, you know, you're bogged down in this process. We know you want to build, and you shouldn't have your land taken from you without compensation." So that is going into a sale to the conservation groups, which is going to preserve that area. I did reach out and talk to the developer, it was Ed Atkins, right? Scott's name, Atkins? And he's resigned to the fact that, you know, maybe on that side of 62 wasn't the right place, but he's looking forward to coming to the community on the east side of 62, and so he's optimistic that Desert Hot Springs is still a good place to build, and has resigned to the, right at the middle, and the entrance to Mission Springs, or to Mission Creek, and Sand to Snow is not a great place to plop an Orange County development. Just quickly wrapping it up, the traffic signals, kudos to staff. I think I talked to Danny earlier, mentioned to him, what a great job. You know when you drive past something and it's perfect, and those just have the feel of done proper and exactly right. And we had that one issue that was raised during public comment. I would really like to see that come back to the council as a discussion item, maybe not an action item, but a discussion item, because if I'm sitting there listening to staff's explanation and then hearing what the three public speakers had to say, I want to ask a whole bunch of questions, but I can't. And I'd like to be able to ask it in a forum here, to where we can get educated as a group, as a council, to what this issue is, so we can be in tune with the community. We had three developers saying, "Hey, something's holding them up," and I would have just liked to have the opportunity to be able to ask questions in an open forum. So if we could get that scheduled for an agenda item. And then the last thing is, when we get our finance director saying revenues are on track in a time like this, you know, we're doing good. I really appreciate the staff's efforts to keep a close eagle eye on the finances and make sure if we do get, see signs of trouble, that they'll be back to us right away, and that we don't ever experience what we did, like, years back. So, sorry to go on so long. It's been a long time away. I could have broke that up into a couple of meetings, but we didn't have them, so there we go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief on my comments, I do have a few. Over the last two months that we've been off, again, we welcome Grocery Outlet to our community. I just wanted to, again, do a shout-out to them. Hiring 100% Desert Hot Springs residents, over 700 applications to go through. What a fantastic opportunity for Desert Hot Springs residents for jobs, but what a great addition to our community. I attended a couple of meetings during this off-time. Riverside County Transportation Budget and Implementation had a meeting. Not a lot pertaining to Desert Hot Springs, but there was one issue, which is on rail, which was discussed further in our C-VAG transportation meeting, which I'm going to get into in a minute. So we, I go into my C-VAG transportation meeting. I was elected chairman of that committee. This is the second time I'll do around as chairman for transportation. Presentations on, we, as a city, gave a presentation for ATP Grant III and the C-VAG $2 million grant along Palm Drive, was able to show pictures and talk about what we did on that stretch to make it safer in our community. I do believe, watching traffic two years ago, and some of the stats that our police department gave us, shows that we've slowed traffic from our police services to our public work services to the grants that we receive for safety. We've truly, we've truly slowed traffic in that area, and hopefully, will continue to save lives. There was an approval of an Amendment Number One for non-cost extension to Western P-11, Coachella Valley Flooding and Blow Sand Risk Assessment Contract. Now, the reason I wanted to read all that was, we've had comments, ever since I've been on the city council, about being able to get across the freeway, or across Indian Canyon or Palm Drive, which turns into Ginatree, to get into Palm Springs for services. And when the wind blows, especially after flooding, there is no way to get there because the blow sand falls on there. Myself, I partnered with Lisa Middleton from Palm Springs, and we had put together a, some comments about two years ago regarding this. C-VAG has taken it upon themselves to put together Uh, SEVAG has taken upon themselves to put together with Riverside County, a committee, um, of individuals that are looking at multiple areas within that area. So the Palm Drive, I know that council member Gardner had worked really hard a couple of years ago to get some signage put up, uh, in those areas. And that is coming forth. It's just taken a little bit longer than we anticipated to show drivers going across there that the roads are blocked. But we also have challenges here in Desert Hot Springs along Little Morongo Dillon Road. Uh, Cathedral City has some challenges, so they basically combined all those. They hired a consultant and they're working on solutions. To build a quarter of a million dollar bridge across Indian Canyon is, is not feasible to today. It would take up, you know, a quarter of a million dollars would take up a large percentage of the money in SEVAG funding for transportation. So it's just not realistic and never will be. But is there ways to put, raise the road? Is there ways to put what they use in the, in the north, snow tunnels? Those types of things to keep the roadways open? And these are things that they'll be looking at. We, Desert Hot Springs, I believe, did something many years ago, well before all of us were on city council, on Pearson, where they raised the road and did these, did these Arizona crossings that have worked well for years. And why aren't they doing these in, in areas that, yes, maybe the 100 and 500 year floods are going to go over those roads, but for the most part, our every year flood would go under it. So these are things that we put on the table and they're continuing to, um, find answers for. And we're looking for the future to have some answers, in the near future, I should say, to have some answers to that. So I wanted to give people an update on that because there's a lot of questions we as city council get. Why can't you keep Palm Springs open? Because people want you to get to the hospital. And so hopefully we'll find some answers to that. Now I have some not great news about RHEL. So, uh, SEVAG has made a committee. And I'm going to tell you the name of the committee. It's facilitating equitable deals with Union Pacific. And for short, it'll be the Fed Up Task Force. This is the staff report from Riverside, uh, Riverside County Transportation Commission. Or this is staff report from SEVAG. Uh, this is a portion of it. It is, it's a couple of paragraphs. I'm not going to read all nine paragraphs that they had in there, but I'm going to read these two because I think it's important that you understand that rail to the Coachella Valley has been important for years and been talked about for years. All 13 years that I've been on the city council, they've been talking about it. Um, former council member Greg Pettis, who passed away a couple of years ago, um, was leading the efforts on finding ways to get rail to the Coachella Valley. They do have an Amtrak. It stops in Palm Springs twice a week between the hours of midnight and 2:00 AM to drop passengers off. And most of the time it's late, uh, because of holdups by Union Pacific due to the freight that takes priority over passenger rail. This is the staff report. In 2019, RCTC was, uh, successful in obtaining a $5.9 million grant from the State Transportation Agency, California State Transportation Agency, constructed temporary train station platform in the city of Indio's Transit Center, which would allow a special event trains during concert seasons as early as next year. RCTC contributed in addition to 2.7 million to build the $8.6 million project. RCTC and Los Angeles, San Diego, San Luis Obispo Rail Corridor Agencies, which is also known as LoSan, uh, then requested access to run special Amtrak trains to the music festivals. The two agencies worked hard to reach an agreement with Union Pacific Railroad. But RCTC staff at the August commission meeting announced that the Union Pacific asking price was $8 million more than the grant itself. As RCTC reported in its August 12 staff report to the commission, in the context of the limited special events service with a total of only 72 trains over three years, the cost benefit of an $8 million investment is no longer, was deemed to be an inappropriate use of public funds in this circumstance, circumstances. Staff originally supported the investment to the capital improvements of the viable station, track and platform projects. However, the revised proposal no longer included such physical infrastructure investments. The RCTC Commission voted to effectively end the project by returning the grant funding, but not before expressed serious concerns with what this could mean for long-term plans to bring regular passenger rail services to the Coachella Valley. This has been a decade, this has been a decades-long effort and much planning and efforts review, uh, environmental review has gone into the feasibility of it. The biggest holdup is a negotiation with...
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to cut you off. Um, can we take a brief recess? Nobody can hear on Zoom, so we can troubleshoot. Um, I want to make sure that the council's being heard.
Do we have a choice? We're in recess.
Check one, two. Check one, two, one, two, one, two. Testing, testing, one, two, three. Testing, testing, testing.
Check it again.
Check, 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 check. Mic check. One, two. Mic check. Mic check, one, two. Mic check, one, two. Check, 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 check. What's going on here?
Restart Dante.
Where is it? Down there.
People love instant messaging me on Zoom.
Who is?
Everyone was instant messaging me on Zoom. I can't hear. That's why I was like, okay, I'm good.
How was that going on?
Huh? That's why I got up.
Something must have happened, yeah.
And then they kind of want...
Check, 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 one, two. Mary, can you hear me? Check, check, one, two. Is that better? Is that much better? That's me. Can you hear me, Mike? Just, I'm just talking now regularly. Can you hear me? Is it better? Check, 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 one, two. Check, 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 one, two. Check, 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 one, two, one, two. Can I get a thumbs up on Zoom if you guys can hear me? Great. Is it better than it was before? Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to check one more time. Zoom, can you hear me Zoom? Okay, good.
Good. I'll just give a note. One more time, everybody thumbs up if you can hear us, please. Okay, great. Everyone on Zoom will be starting again shortly.
Are we recording? We're live? Okay. All right, we're, we're back from recess. We apologize, uh, somehow the audio cut off for Zoom for anybody listening. I'm not going to read those two paragraphs again, but I was talking about the facilitating equitable deals with Union Pacific Fed Up Task Force that was produced by, or being put together by SEVAG. Uh, each jurisdiction will have a member on this. And basically what I was, to summarize what was said, it was there's an $8.6 million project for rail services to come to Coachella Valley for the music festivals and possibly other services over a certain period of time. It would cost us $8.6 million to build the platform and whatever else we needed to do. And, uh, Union Pacific came back with a plus $8 million, um, price tag on that. So $16.6 million, which was way out of the price range. And so, uh, RCTC estimated at, uh, looking from actually Colton to Indio for a 70 mile, 75 mile track would be close to $1 billion to put a third track in. So this isn't feasible at this time and just wasn't, um, it wasn't efficient to, to spend public monies on that at this time. So I wanted to make that very clear to the council that that's been worked on for many, many years. And unfortunately, right now, we're back at square one. Um, I did have a chance to meet with Maria Lopez, who's working with the Methodist Church. There's been some questions about the Methodist Church in our community because it did close its services for a while. The region actually got together and decided that they were going to allow certain services there. And they wanted to reopen and fund the, um, community center, which is, uh, used to be the preschool behind the Methodist Church. So more to come on that. I just wanted to let you know that you might see some traffic in there and some updates to the building. The Methodist Church organization is actually working on that for our community. Uh, myself and Ms. Pye work on a committee with food programs, faith-based organization in our senior center. Uh, we try to have bi-weekly meetings. They sometime go every three weeks or so. Um, but it's the opportunity on Zoom for everybody to meet together. What's come out of this, which is great for our community, is collaboration. Uh, what programs are doing what, who's helping who? And it seems to be working. And so request has been that this committee continue in, in a regular capacity. And, uh, so we're organizing that. Supervisor Perez, our District Four County Supervisor, has had multiple updates on the COVID effects for our county. Our staff, myself, some of the council members attend those meetings. Um, it's not much different than what the state is pretty much mandating. As most of you know, the state now has a new color code, uh, and process for reopening. Riverside County, along with most counties in the state of California, are in a purple stage, which is the furthest away from completely reopening. Uh, but they're working towards that. We did, uh, they were allowing certain businesses to open, so some have done that. And hopefully in the near future, we will see more businesses open. Again, as been mentioned up here many times, Royal Emerald, I wanted to again congratulate them and welcome them to our community. Over time, uh, they've committed to 1,000 jobs in our community. They've already committed to multimillion dollars in donations to our community under their umbrella of children food programs and community programs. Uh, so it just, uh, they put their money where their mouth is. They've already donated over $100,000 to our community in certain areas and just really, again, welcoming them to our community. They've taken a dilapidated building that would have been really dilapidated over time and transformed it into something that our community can be proud of. And there's going to be a lot more to talk about on that very soon. Also, our city clerk will be presenting, um, voting precincts. Uh, there's not, actually won't be able to go out to a precinct or a voting poll place, I should say, and vote this year, but there will be two locations in our community. Um, and everyone will receive an email-in ballot. And he'll be announcing that as they're, they're formed, uh, hopefully by our next meeting, so the month of October, when this all takes place, when you're going to vote. Um, and, um, get ready to vote, uh, you'll have opportunities to do that. So I just want to know, I've had a lot of questions about how do I vote? Where do I go? As of right now, the governor has stated that you will receive, everybody will receive a mail-in ballot and that you will also be receiving, everyone is registered to vote. If you're not registered to vote, there's many ways to do that. And you can contact any of us and/or go to our city website and they can, they can walk you through that. That's all the comments I had. We did have one request for a public comment that chimed in at the end there. And Mr. Turner is going to let that person in, announce that person? So I'll be reopening public comments.
He actually is no longer online, so.
All right. So the person was back and forth. Maybe they're having some technical difficulties also. If they pop back in, we'll give that person an opportunity. If not, at the end of the meeting, we'll have public comments again. For anyone that didn't speak at the beginning of the meeting and has comments on items not on the agenda. Um, I do have a request sometimes to move items up as some people, uh, drop in and need to get out of these meetings quickly. Item number 11, I'm going to move up and handle that right away. Um, that's our administrative calendar, item number 11. It's amendment to five, amendment five to the AB 2766 memorandum of understanding or MOU between SEVAG and the member jurisdictions to provide substantial... I cannot read tonight. Okay, let's try that again. I cannot say that word tonight, sustainable. Why is that so hard to say tonight? Funding of the regional PM10 street sweeping program. I was trying to move that up for Katie Barrows from SEVAG. I know she's here to answer any questions on that and I just couldn't get it out. I apologize. And our staff, staff report will be given by Gerald Serrano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to turn it over to Katie Barrows with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments.
Hi, Katie.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Thanks. It's exciting to see your new council chambers. Congratulations. Um, I'll just make this brief. This is a request for, um, continuing the contribution that the city of Desert Hot Springs makes to our regional street sweeping program, which is clearing sand off of the roadways. As you may know, one of our most significant air quality problems is a small particulate matter, PM10, which is small enough to get into and cause problems in our lungs. Um, we have since the 1990s had this, this street sweeping program, which is managed by SEVAG. Um, it takes care of cleaning up the regional roads in the city of Desert Hot Springs. That would include Indian Avenue, Palm Drive and other, uh, large throughways. Um, and basically we have three different funding sources for the program. One of those, uh, we just received last year, a million dollar grant from the South Coast Air Quality Management District for five years of funding. Um, yesterday, the Riverside County Board of Supervisors, um, approved $150,000 a year, which is through what's called the COLMAC money for... is through what's called the COLMAC money for the plant that's down in the Mecca area. And we are making our way through, asking each of the cities in C-VAG's territory, from Desert Hot Springs to Coachella, to continue to contribute 75% of your AB 2766 funds. These are money from vehicle license fees that are specifically allocated for air quality. So briefly, the request is that the council approve an MOU with the city and C-VAG and all of our, your member cities throughout the Coachella Valley to continue this very successful program. It is one that helps us to stay in compliance with both, both the EPA and South Coast Air Quality Management District requirements for PM-10. So we do consider it very important, and we do appreciate the support that we received in the past for Desert Hot Springs, and we hope that could continue. I'll make it brief and just answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Before we get to any questions, do any public comments?
No, we do not.
All right. Any questions from the City Council? You'll just need to raise your hand if you have any questions. I see none at this time. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we take the two recommendations of staff for approval.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor. Gerald, do you want to put that on the screen? You've got you running back and forth here. We're going to test our new systems here and see how they work. Do you see it on the screen anywhere? Oh, wait, there, I see it's popped up now. All right, please vote. Mr. City Clerk?
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you, Katie, for joining us tonight.
Thanks, Mayor, for moving the item up. I really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You, too. We'll move back to the public hearings. Item number three, Development Agreement Number 20-10, a development agreement between the city of Desert Hot Springs, and there's multiple applicants there. I'm not going to go through all their names and destroy them. I apologize with that, but I will give it to Rebecca Deming, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I was actually hoping you would go through the names, so I didn't have to. Those who say the applicants, the six applicants have applied for a development agreement amendment to update the name on this proposed development agreement to the current owner of the project and other minor changes and updates. These minor changes and updates, including changing it from medical marijuana to adult-use marijuana, and updating the dates and numbers within the development agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, and staff is recommending approval of this ordinance by title only at the first reading. Thank you.
Before we get started, take any public comments. Ms. Pye has a comment.
I would like to ask the city attorney to explain the process of the public hearings.
Thank you, Mr. Members of Council. For pretty much everybody, public hearings are an opportunity. It's a formal action, obviously, by the city council, but it's an opportunity for staff to present a staff report and then formal testimony. The testimony is provided by people who would like to provide testimony, and that could truly be anybody. There's obviously nobody here right now, but people on Zoom. It is not an opportunity for, I should backtrack. We can obviously have some questions of applicants, things like that, clarifications, that kind of issue. It is not an opportunity, though, however, for, for applicants or people providing testimony to provide, you know, ask a lot, maybe pertinent questions that really are maybe legal in nature, asking for legal opinions, that kind of stuff. We did have a situation at the Planning Commission last time where we had a lot of back and forth, and I really tried to hone in that at a public hearing, we need to provide notice and opportunity to be heard, and that means that persons can, in fact, provide all the testimony that they would like, they are not, I shouldn't say that, all reasonable testimony that they're, that they like, in terms of, the three-minute rule does not apply. So it is really a chance for people to provide their concerns and anything, to provide any kind of information that they deem pertinent, that they would like the city council to consider. Hopefully, that clears it up.
As everybody knows, each chairman is a lot of their, the way that they like to run their meetings, the way that I run this meeting during public hearings, is that we're going to enter questions, enter questions, entertain questions of staff from the city council. Then we're going to open the public hearings. I'll give the applicant time to, to say a few things and give public testimony. We have applicant time to rebut. This is not a negotiation time back and forth. This is time for applicant and/or testimony to be put in for decision-making by the city council. With that said, I'll entertain questions of staff from any council members. Do I have any? Yes, Mr. Griffin.
Rebecca, if I remember correctly, or maybe I don't, did we not have, is this the one that we had at our last meeting that we needed to actually bring forth as an item to vote on? If you could refresh my memory.
So it is not. We have two development agreements that were applied for at the same time. You had the second reading for one of them on the consent calendar today, and this is a new one you are seeing for the first time, for the first reading.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Gardner. Tall, tongue-twide steer.
Yes, bald white guys. There you go. Rebecca, if I could, in reading the staff report on this one, I didn't notice any substantive changes to the development agreement itself, just the sale, if you will, or change in the, in the principles. Is that correct?
So it has the main reason for this application on this amendment is to change it to the new, to the own, current owners or the sale. However, this one did have a few additional changes that the previous one you saw did not have. And specifically, as I mentioned, to specify to update it for adult-use cannabis versus just medical cannabis. So that's the, it's non-substantive changes, in our opinion.
Yeah, and, and because I believe the prior one was issued only when there was medical cannabis, right?
That's correct.
So that's why you're updating that. So other than that, we really don't see any substantive changes, other than the change in the applicant owner name, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pye?
I do see one. This has 3.5.1. This has a 10-year extension? Okay.
That was this, that, that is not part of, if you look at the redlined exhibit two, that is not, has not changed from the original application, but it does have a term that allows for it to be extended for one additional five-year period following the expiration of the 10-year term.
Thank you.
I guess, in essence, the term does go longer because this is considered a new development agreement, but it is the same term that the previous, you know, the same amount of time the previous owners got as well.
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I guess I'll ask. The pertinent question here is, are we sure that the original owner is in agreement with transferring this? And we've made sure that people have good standing on this one?
We have the applicant here. I believe the reason that we're in this situation is because the previous owner sold it without transferring the development agreement. So we are working with the current owners of the project. The old owners are no longer, no longer own the project.
Okay, and we're, they're comfortable with transferring their interest in this project? We're not going to get an objection to that later?
Correct. They sold the project to the new owners.
Okay.
One more question.
Yes.
And I'm nitpicking here. Under the notices, I guess this is 318.2, it says Chuck, and I think it should say Charles.
We'll correct that. And I also believe that the signature, the signature block also is all, so I'll correct that as well.
All right, move to item number three, which is, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. We'll take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant present to make comments?
Yes, he is.
And would the applicant like to make comments?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
We can. Please introduce yourself.
Yeah, so Chris Brieswiler here with MSI Consulting. Just wanted to say thanks to everybody for having us here. I'm here representing the applicant, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. We'll open, we'll take public testimony at this time. Do we have any public testimony?
No, we do not.
All right, there's nothing for you to rebut there, Chris, so we'll close the public hearing at this time. And I'll entertain questions, more discussion and questions to staff and/or a motion to approve the first reading.
I'll move that we adopt this by first reading.
I'll second.
There is a, there is a motion and a second. All those, please, what happened to your screen? Try your stylus. Try the stylus right there. Gerald, we might need some help over here. All right, I'll wait for Gerald to get back to his seat. We're going to make him even more skinnier tonight, running back and forth. I'm afraid you might break something or something. I need you on two canes. Go ahead, Gerald.
Mr. Mayor, the motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council, the city of Desert Hot Springs, approving the development agreement between the city of Desert Hot Springs and the individuals listed on the agenda item.
Thank you very much. Move to item number four, which is a Coachella-specific plan, Amendment SP-204, and the mitigated negative declaration amendment, which is ENV-201. And again, Rebecca.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before we continue on this one. I know there's no legal requirement, but I have accepted, we're in campaign season, and I've accepted a campaign contribution from somebody related to the developer, so I am going to, out of an abundance of caution and what I feel is necessary, I'll be recusing on this item so that there's no appearance of a conflict.
Thank you, and you get to step into our brand-new waiting room over there. And as soon as Mr. Betts passes me on the dais, Ms. Deming, you can begin. All right, you're good to go.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The applicant, Coachella Holdings LLC, is proposing a specific plan amendment. The Coachella Industrial Cultivation and Ancillary Cannabis Park is located on 46 parcels located on 100 and approximately 154 acres, bounded by 18th Avenue to the north, 19th to the south, and Indian Canyon to the west. In 2017, the project applicant proposed changes to the county-approved project to reflect the changing markets. The specific, a specific plan was submitted to the city and was adopted in October 17, 2017. The proposed project is an amendment to the specific plan that would modify the allowable land uses in the specific plan, mixed-use zoning, along with accompanying changes to the development standards and design guidelines to allow for potential, to allow for a potential hotel and amphitheater uses on parcel 30 and 31, respectively. The proposed hotel would include 175 guest rooms within a four-story building, and the proposed amphitheater would seat approximately 5,000 people to host at most one event per week. Now, to be clear, that this, this proposal is for a specific plan amendment, basically allowing those uses. Those uses would still have to submit a formal application to the city in the form of a development permit for approval by staff. The proposal would allow for additional uses in the mixed-use designation. Additionally, the seven-acre parcel 25 was originally provided for Southern California Edison power stations and system to serve the specific plan project. SCE no longer requires this lot. Therefore, this amendment also proposes to re-designate parcel 25 as industrial energy and utilities, to provide space for private power generation and other industrial uses. The uses in the agricultural zone have also been clarified to include other types of crops. Please note that the project description summarizes the major changes in the specific plan. However, there are minor changes to clarify meeting. Since the adoption of the previous project MND and approval of the specific plan in 2017, work has been initiated on the site to support the development of the specific plan. The Planning Commission, at its meeting on July 14, held a public hearing and approved a resolution of the Planning Commission recommending that the city council, one, certify the addendum to the mitigated NECDAC, two, adopt the mitigation monitoring plan, three, approve the Coachella-specific plan amendment, and approve an ordinance amending Chapter 17.200 with an added condition that if on-street parking is used or proposed, the spaces shall be striped and approved by the fire department to ensure access. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on the different changes, which are outlined in the staff report, and we provided redlined copies of the specific plan and the design guidelines. So there are updates to the development regulations. The development standards, which are in the specific plan table 3.5 and figure 3.4, have been updated to reflect the new structure height maximum limit for parcel 30. The structure height for parcel 30 is proposed to be 65 feet maximum. The maximum height for interior parcels still remains 65. The maximum height for all other parcels adjacent to Indian Canyon, 18th Avenue, 19th Avenue, and Calle de los Romos remains at 55 feet. However, a two-story maximum has been removed. So therefore, instead of saying it has to be two stories, if for some reason they're able to fit a two-story plus another storage area, then they'd still be able to meet those requirements, as long as they remain within the height limitations, instead of having both a height and a story limitation. Additionally, flexibility language has been added to the specific plan. It specifically allows for leniency in certain cases to be handled administratively and certain cases for it to go to the Planning Commission. So the language added is, this specific plan is intended to allow some flexibility in its requirements. Should an applicant have a unique idea, design, or other situation related only to the following height, setbacks, screening, or parking requirements that renders the strict application of the specific plan infeasible, the applicant may apply to the POA and Planning Commission for approval of their project structure. This consideration of the application by the Planning Commission need not be a public hearing. The Planning Commission's determination of the application shall be discretionary and up to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's decision may be appealed to city council pursuant to municipal code. They have also updated the specific plan section 3.4.3, allowable land uses. One of the big changes in this section includes changing it from design, development permit by the staff to the permitted uses by the staff. This is to put it more in line with the process we have with our updated zoning code and general plan that the city, the city did. So therefore, all permitted uses do require a development permit approval by the Community Development Director. So the process essentially stays the same, but it cleans up the list of uses to be more closely matched with our updated zoning code. They have also added a allowance for temporary facilities, basically allowing for, making it very clear the process for temporary facilities and temporary use permits. They have updated Table 3.4 of the specific plan, which shows the allowable uses, including uses that require conditional use permit. Listed, the uses added as part of the proposed update include the outdoor amphitheater, permitted in mixed-use and light industrial, convenience store permitted in mixed-use and light industrial, hotel motel permitted on parcel 30 only, and cannabis non-storefront retail permitted in mixed-use industrial and industrial energy. Additionally, they added a sign program, which is added Section 4.1 side program. This complete section has been added to the specific plan. Due to formatting error, it was not originally shown on the Planning Commission redlines, but is shown on the city council redlines. The attached exhibit is shown in the staff report showing two digital signs and some pylon signs. The two digital signs are for onsite, non-commercial messages only, and no offsite messages are permitted. Displays are not to be animated or appear to be moving, and each display shall appear for at least eight seconds and shall remain blank for one second between images. This is to help the traffic process and make sure that the images don't flash too quickly or, as mentioned, don't appear moving. Additionally, they added Section 5.3. Additionally, they added section 5.3. This includes discussion of the special events that would occur in the amphitheater venue. So the amphitheater venue would basically have, required to have a traffic management plan put together prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. This includes working with the city, the police department, and the fire department to ensure that we have a traffic management plan that addresses the specific plan area description and operations, an event coordination plan, trip generation levels, overall parking strategy, parking management and access and egress plans, transit service, pedestrian circulation, transportation demand management and trip reduction, and traffic management. So all of this will be worked out prior to any kind of occupancy of the special, of the amphitheater area. Additionally, special event permit is required specifically for each event, and that way the city can address any kind of unique situation based on the actual type of events that they are putting on. The addition of section 5.8.4, this section has been added to clarify discharge remediation that is proposed by the applicant in the agricultural zone basins. This allows for additional photo remediation and producing agricultural basins. The addition of 6.5, section 6.5 adds flexibility to Coachella to either pay the art in public places fee or submit to council for the installation of art. Currently, the municipal code requires industrial projects just to pay the fee and does not have the ability to submit for art. This specific plan would allow the Coachella project to put together an application to submit and go through the process for an art in public places in lieu of paying the fee directly. They would still pay the fee for any art that was over and above the amount required in the code. They have updated the design guidelines, and many of the design guideline updates include cleanup and changes that are already addressed in the specific plan, changes that I've discussed. The additional changes in the design guideline include the fact that the equipment may encroach in the setbacks, including the front setbacks, provided that the equipment is screened from sidewalks and crosswalks, but not the interior streets of the project. Private street parking may be used for the required parking numbers. Additionally, up to 5% of the required parking may be allocated to the parcel 25 community parking area. They've added a technology command center basement to the security building, and they've added project-wide emergency and fire access plan to the design guidelines. They've added detail to the video management system, updated the site plan with master security and fencing plan, and updated the approved perimeter landscaping plans from the approved MSWD plans. Staff does have recommended conditions, which, as mentioned, the Planning Commission did recommend council approve, but we wanted to still point out those additional unique conditions. One is that the city and any agency or officers, employees, agents, including the Community Development Department, shall not, under any circumstances whatsoever, be responsible for ensuring compliance with the Property Owner Association requirements, which requirements are private in nature. The city or any agents, or any of their agents or officers are not responsible for ensuring that that Property Owners Association has approved an application project before the city approves the application or issues permits. Our sole function is to ensure that the project we've received meets the requirements of the specific plan, or in terms of the building permits, meets the requirements of the building code and not the Property Owner Association. As mentioned, all events must have an approved special event permit and shall comply with all conditions relating to that permit, and any crop production within parcels 101, 102, and 103 shall not limit or change the overall site hydrology and/or hydraulic capabilities of the retention basins, design, and function. Any modifications to grading or hydrology will require a recent middle and approval of grading plans and hydrology report and any other studies required for the city engineer. An initial study was prepared for the proposed amendment for this project, and in accordance with CEQA guidelines, an initial study was determined that if the project would have a significant event. In the case of this proposed project, the specific plan was analyzed in a previous CEQA document. The initial study can be used to determine pursuant to the adopted mitigated negative declaration, which of a project's effects were adequately examined by adopted mitigated negative declaration. This project was determined to be similar to those described in the previous project MND, with the exception of air quality, energy, greenhouse gas, and traffic. The initial study recommendation, recommended further study of these resources to determine the appropriate CEQA document. The analysis from these technical studies was summarized in the MND addendum. It should be noted that the initial study checklist from CEQA was in December 2018, and MND addendum and the initial study in the appendix are consistent with the updated guidelines. I wanted to note that the staff mistakenly attached an older version of those air quality studies, and they have been emailed to council for the updated study, and it is, I will share my screen to show the corrected date. And so I just want to note for the public that the corrected study is this one, the Coachella Industrial Park, Parcels 30 and 31, Air Quality, Global Climate Change, and Energy Impact Analysis dated December 23, 2019. Staff also would like to note that the city received a comment letter, which has been provided to the City Council. With that, staff recommends that the City Council approve a resolution of the City Council of the City of Desert Hot Springs certifying the addendum to the mitigated NECDAC, adopt the mitigation monitoring plan, and approve the Coachella and Specific Plan Amendment Number SP-20-4, amending the Coachella and Specific Plan in the city, and introduce for first reading and by title only an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, amending Chapter 17.200, Coachella and Specific Plan, to Title 17 Zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to amend the zoning standards for the Coachella and Specific Plan area. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I do have a question from Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rebecca, you referenced the letter that we got this afternoon from the safer organization, Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. It raises some concerns regarding whether or not the change in designation allowing for non-industrial, non-cannabis uses for the hotel and for the proposed amphitheater actually complies with the CEQA study that was done for the original project and for, and that you emailed to us again this afternoon. In reading their concerns, it does raise an issue in my mind that we are opening ourselves up for delaying legal action and a few things along those lines, much as what our colleagues in Rancho Mirage faced with their in-and-out issue and the violations or alleged violations of CEQA with that. Are you comfortable that the CEQA study that you're relying on allowing for the variance for the hotel and for the amphitheater are in compliance with CEQA, and why? Would you, how do you justify that?
So yes, so we have reviewed the documents that were provided in the original plan check process. We also have, as you may be aware, we went out to, we do have a contract with an environmental firm that does our peer review for environmental. That is their job to ensure that the applicants are complying with the law and keeping the city's best interest at heart, and we have spoken with them, and we feel confident that it is in compliance with CEQA. That obviously does not prevent anyone from, you know, providing litigation regarding CEQA, but the city staff believes that they are in compliance with the requirements. The applicant also has their environmental consultant here to answer any additional questions you may have as it relates to this and specifically the letter as well.
And I do see, if I'm looking at the queue correctly, I believe the representative from the environmental organization is here as well. I'm matching up the name on the queue with the name on the letter, so hopefully he'll be able to add some additional input as well. Okay, that's all I've got. Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Griffin?
Rebecca, I have some questions. So I understand they're going to form a POA, which is similar to an HOA. However, that does not permit the building of anything without city permits. Is that correct?
So that is correct. So the POA process was in the original specific plan, and it was originally improved and noted that the Community Development Director was supposed to receive POA approval prior to approving any development permits. However, that is not the normal process for a city to be in, to be responsible for ensuring that there is POA approval. So that's why we've added this condition at this amendment.
Okay. I just want to make sure that even though there is a POA, they still would have to get any permits for any building or construction, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And so is it my understanding that this specific plan is done in lieu of a development agreement?
So that is, that is a section in the specific plan that does show, that it says the specific plan in lieu of a development agreement. I was not here on the original specific plan in 2017, and that is not changed in this amendment, so that was on there previously. I have had the applicant discuss possibly starting a development agreement again, but they did not want to postpone the specific plan at this time and leave the, you know, and have that language still in the specific plan at this approval.
I'm just kind of curious now, why would we redo a specific plan if we're doing, why would we do a development agreement if we're doing a specific plan in lieu of it?
So it isn't uncommon to have a development agreement along with a specific plan. It's the very specific language in the specific plan. So if they decided to move forward with a development agreement, it would be staff's recommendation that they further amend the specific plan at the same time as the development agreement and bring it to council to remove that section, so that they would no longer have a specific plan in lieu of a development agreement. They would have a specific plan and a development agreement.
Okay, so it'd be really an extra step?
It would be an extra step because of that language currently in the development, in the specific plan.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
That's all the questions I have from council at this time. We'll open the public hearing. We will now take testimony from the applicant. Is the applicant here and would they like to make testimony?
Is Kenny Dickerson? Kenny or Catherine Dickerson are both?
I see Michael and Kenny and Catherine Dickerson. You can unmute all three of them and let one of them take the lead on any comments.
Good afternoon, council and staff. Catherine Dickerson here with Coachella, here to answer any questions or comments regarding this. I would like our environmental engineers to also testify. I guess they'll talk after Brian does regarding that letter that was received earlier this evening, right before the council meeting. But otherwise, yes, we plan on likely pursuing a development agreement in addition to this specific plan amendment. We currently have a development that wants to get a certificate of occupancy instead of a temporary certificate of occupancy. That is why we're pushing for the amendment now for the specific plan, and we will go back and amend the language to say it's in addition to, not in lieu of, a development agreement with the city. So if y'all have any other questions, feel free to ask them.
All right, we'll take public testimony. You have an opportunity to come back and rebut any testimony at that time after the public's done. Do we have any public speakers on this?
Yes, Brian Flynn.
Brian, I see you on the screen. You'll have to unmute yourself, introduce yourself, and go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic. Good evening. My name is Brian Flynn. I'm an attorney with Lozado Jury here tonight on behalf of the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. I just want to briefly summarize why the addendum in front of you tonight does not comply with the requirements of CEQA. And of all the possible environmental review documents that could have been prepared, the addendum is subject to the least environmental scrutiny and public review, and as such, CEQA has rules about when you can and cannot use an addendum instead of preparing a negative declaration, or EIR. And the CEQA rule that applies here is that an addendum is not allowed, that the proposed project may produce significant environmental effects that have not been previously studied. So the question is, does the addition of the hotel and amphitheater produce significant impacts that were not previously studied in 2017 or 2008? And the answer is yes, because it does introduce new impacts. For one specific example, the addendum analyzes the traffic impacts from an event at the amphitheater, and it looks at the amphitheater traffic and says that temporary surges in circulation and parking can result in significant localized impacts at three different intersections. It also concludes that five intersections would operate at unacceptable levels during an event at the amphitheater. So, and it even adds a new mitigation measure to deal with traffic during an amphitheater event. So the addendum admits that there's a new significant impact. It admits it hasn't been studied before. It admits that it's so bad to require new mitigation, and so therefore, using an addendum is inappropriate, and you have to use an EIR or an NECDAC. Excuse me, sorry. And this is, and the conclusion is further supported. Who's laughing at me? Sorry about that. So sorry about that. The conclusion is further supported by expert comments we submitted along with our comments. The experts found the project would result in unstudied significant impacts on human health, increased cancer risks from formaldehyde emissions, from diesel emissions, as well as significant impacts on wildlife, greenhouse gases, emissions, and traffic. So because the hotel and amphitheater are creating these new impacts, and these new impacts were not studied previously, you cannot rely on an addendum at this time. So we're requesting that the City Council refrain from approving it and send it back to the Planning Commission to prepare a NECDAC or an EIR to analyze these impacts. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your public testimony. You have more public testimony?
Yes, Anne Sirdzial.
Anne, I see you on the screen. You need to unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay, I had you on, I had you on the phone. I'm going to hang up. I had you on the phone also. Last time I testified, I needed to be on the phone.
No worries. You sound clear now. Go ahead.
I'm here representing the applicant, so do you want me to wait until that portion of the agenda?
If you're rebutting any information, yes, you'll need to wait till the end, yes. All right, any other public speakers?
Yes, I have Lenny Osoro.
I'm sorry, Anne, yes, because if there's any information that you'll need to rebut, you'll need to wait till the next item, which is the applicant's rebuttal. So I'll give you a chance to speak at that time. So I'm going to go back to anyone else that's not attached to the project that would like to speak.
I have Lenny Osoro that signed up to speak.
Lenny, are you part of the project, or are you here to speak in public testimony?
No, I'm part of the project. I apologize. I put my hand down. I'll wait, I'll wait until after. Thank you.
No worries.
Roma Stromberg.
She is also part of the engineering team, sorry.
Okay, Katie Wilson, same?
Yes.
Tom Wang?
Also part of the team.
And then Michael Dickerson is the last one that I have.
All right, so we have the rest of the team there. We'll go to the opportunity for the applicant to rebuttal.
Yeah, I'll speak on just the first part.
Hold on, Michael.
Just regarding to specific plan enforcement.
Michael, hold on one second. If you can just put everybody in order in how they're going to do, I don't know which one of you, either Catherine or you, want to manage that, but if, as soon as you're done with your comments, Michael, if you want to introduce the next person and go for there. Go ahead. You're muted still, Michael.
Oh, there we go. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to jump in just before the rebuttal section from the applicant started, just regarding the comment I wanted to make on POA authority and involvement in the submittal processes. Staff has recommended the removal of the Property Owners Association's approvals as a requirement in any application submitted to the city, specifically as a requirement for staff to confirm that a letter from the POA asserting conformance with the POA's requirements, which are part of our specific plan's design guidelines, has been obtained prior to processing development permits and applications associated with those through the city. The applicant, Coachella, has requested that these processes remain in the specific plan, noting that the City Council has already approved the POA's involvement in the approval process under the original specific plan's approval in November of 2017. The applicant, Coachella. The applicant, Coachillen Holdings, requests that the city council not remove these sections because, one, the P O A involvement in the application process with the city has already been approved. Two, these provisions in the specific plan allow certain P O A authority over the approval of developments allowed within the Coachillen-specific-plan area. Three, the city should never approve something which has not been reviewed nor approved by the Property Owners Association or which may not conform with the C C N Rs and bylaws set forth by the P O A. Four, requiring the P O A approval letter does not create an undue burden on city staff in processing applications. It's a single piece of paper, part of a larger checklist. And five, the P O A should continue to have authority over the lands it presides over. This has already been approved and I don't see a reason why we would remove it from an already-approved Property Owners Association authority in the original specific plan just because it's not something that's normal. It's normal now because we already had it approved. Thank you. And I'll yield to Catherine to designate who should speak next.
All right. Annie, do you want to take the first introduction of the environmentals and why we did the process that we did and why it is in conformance with all CEQA requirements?
Just give us a second. We're trying to get her back on the screen. There we go. Annie, you're back on the screen. Go ahead and unmute yourself. There you go. You're all set.
Thank you. So the city went through the process, as Rebecca described, to determine if there would be newer, more significant environmental impacts from the specific plan changes. And as Rebecca noted, an initial study was prepared for the specific plan changes, which recommended additional analysis for air quality, greenhouse gases, traffic, energy and noise. The applicant prepares these analyses without knowing what the impacts would be and was prepared to do a new document if required. However, the new studies and M N D addendum, the new studies in the M N D addendum were also subject to a rigorous third-party review by the city's outside environmental consultant. The size of the hotel and amphitheater were estimated to be on the larger end of what the parcels could accommodate and, as Rebecca stated, individual projects would have to go through their own review process. None of the changes proposed by, proposed by the applicant would result in an impact that is new or substantially more severe than those described in the previous CEQA documentation. For example, the intersections identified in the newest analysis would have been affected in the old project and would require mitigation. The project remains a mix of commercial and industrial land uses that is similar to what was previously analyzed. The applicant has identified some more specific land uses described based on market demand, which was what triggered the reevaluation. However, after analysis, all of the impacts were determined to be less insignificant or less insignificant with mitigation. Significant impacts were identified at the, as I said, significant impacts were identified at these same intersections with the previous project. These impacts are not more substantial than those evaluated in the original M N D. The changes did not require major revisions to the M N D. And merely having a more focused discussion on impacts to more specific land uses does not, on its face, mean the impact is new or more substantial and does not trigger a new environmental document. The letter also provides specific comments on indoor air quality, noise, traffic, greenhouse gases and biological resources. The comments generally show a misunderstanding of the requirements of the City of Desert Hot Springs, Coachella Valley M S H C P, South Coast Air Quality Management District CEQA guidelines and the general environmental setting of the Coachella Valley. And the team is happy to answer specific questions if the council has them.
Thank you very much. Catherine, who will be next speaker?
Katie Wilson, if you're still on.
Katie, you're on the screen. Just need to unmute yourself. I see you're unmuted, Katie, but we can't hear you. Is there another speaker you have, Catherine?
Yes. Tom Wang, the traffic analysis.
Tom, you're on the screen. Just need to unmute yourself.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, this is Tom Wong. I'm with Gendini Group. I'm the one that prepared the traffic study. So just looking over the comments from the letter, it's, it just say that the, one of the comments they have that, that the, it was that, the I-10 interchange at Indian Canyon Drive was not analyzed. Now, that's not true. The Ram intersection are analyzed in the traffic study. It's just that the, the Ram intersection is actually right at the side street. So those were named for the two side streets, Twentieth Avenue and Garnet Avenue. So I noticed that that was a mistake on their part. And also that the V M T analysis were not included in the traffic because the traffic study were completed prior to requirement for the V M T. So, but regardless, the, the V M T analysis would not, would not have affected the methodology of the intersection level service that was provided in the, in the updated traffic study as well as, as well as the approved, previously approved 2017 traffic study. Okay. And that's why I have.
Thank you very much. Catherine, anyone else?
I believe that handled everything and I would also like to comment back on.
Lenny needs to talk.
Right. I'm talking about just environmental stuff really quick. One of the also comments by city council member was adding different uses into the light industrial zone. That zone was already zoned mixed use, so a hotel and amphitheater are considered to be compliant with that zone that was already established with our pre-existing specific plan. So it's not adding a new use into a new zone. That zone already existed in the original specific plan from 2017. And unless council has other questions regarding the environmental impacts, I will yield the rest to Lenny.
Thank you. Lenny, you just unmute yourself and you'll be good to go.
Thank you. Good evening, city council. My name is Lenny Asaro. I'm one of the legal councils from Dinsmore and Shoal for Coachillen. The city is requiring Coachillen to accept the following condition of approval with respect to this specific plan amendment. It's condition number 13 and it reads, I quote, "With respect to the development impact fees and a recognition of the need for improvements causing impacts of any development within the 2010 annexation area, including the Coachillen-specific-plan, the applicant developer and/or project shall mitigate such impacts by paying the city D I Fs to provide funds for maintaining and augmenting improvements and other facilities and needs in the Coachillen-specific-plan. These D I Fs shall be in addition to any other required mitigation measure. The D I Fs shall be payable upon the completion of an updated nexus study identifying the appropriate D I Fs for properties in the 2010 annexation area, which includes the Coachillen-specific-plan." Close quote. That is condition 13. Pursuant to section 17.144.0, .080, Coachillen may apply to the city council for a waiver of any D I Fs based on the absence of any reasonable relationship or nexus between the impacts of that development and either the amount of the fees charged or the type of facilities to be financed. As of the date that Coachillen will be required to accept this condition, the conditions of approval, in particular, condition 13 that I just read, which is expected to be 15 days following today's date, city council meeting, there will be an absence of any reasonable relationship or nexus between the development's impacts, if any, and either the amount of fees to be charged or the type of facilities to be financed because there is no nexus report that covers the 2010 annexation area, of which the Coachillen property is a part. The only nexus report that exists is dated 2008 and the report does not consider the 2010 annexation area. Condition 13 requires Coachillen to admit that there is a present, quote, "need for improvements causing impacts of any development within the 2010 annexation area," close quote. However, there is no evidence of a present need for improvements because there is no nexus report establishing a present need for improvements. Condition 13 requires Coachillen to pay D I Fs, quote, "upon the completion of an updated nexus study," close quote. However, the condition fails to state that Coachillen reserves its right to attack or set aside the nexus report pursuant to the rights conferred by the Mitigation Fee Act under California law. As a property owner, Coachillen has that right. Also, condition 13 requires Coachillen to pay D I Fs, quote, "upon the completion of an updated nexus study," close quote. However, section 17.144.070 of the city's municipal code states that D I Fs shall be paid, quote, "at the time of the issuance of any required building permit," close quote. Therefore, this condition, condition 13 that I read violates the code with respect to the timing of the obligation to pay D I Fs. Pursuant to section 17.144.1, .150 of the city's municipal code, the provisions of chapter 17.144 of the code, which is development impact fees, shall at all times be subject and subordinate to the provisions of the Mitigation Fee Act. The act does not permit the language that the city is requiring in condition 13. Based on the foregoing, Coachillen requests, respectfully requests, the city council to direct the community development director to revise condition 13 to state the following, quote, "Applicant developer shall comply with the Mitigation Fee Act and chapter 17.144 of the city's municipal code and applicant developer and the city reserves any and all rights under the act, chapter 17.144, and applicable laws related thereto," close quote. That is the language that Coachillen is requesting for condition 13. If the city rejects the proposed revision and requires Coachillen to accept condition 13 as written, then unfortunately pursuant to California Government Code, section 66499.37, Coachillen will have to file a complaint in the Superior Court of California Riverside County against the city to seek a determination of the reasonableness, legality and validity of condition 13 and any other condition which is unreasonable, illegal or invalid in the conditions of approval. And with that, and with that said, I yield.
Catherine, anyone else to speak on your behalf?
That should be it. Thank you.
Katie Wilson was saying she wanted to jump on but needed a number unmuted.
Yes. I have two numbers called in, so let me, is, is that Katie's?
I'm not sure which one. I'm just looking at the.
We have a nine-five, Michael, we have a nine-five-one number and we have a seven-six-zero number.
Katie, can you put in the chat which number you are?
She should be the nine-five-one.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead and unmute yourself there. Do we know how to unmute ourselves when it comes to phones? I know they're a little different than.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Perfect.
Yes. Excellent. All right. So I just wanted to address some of the comments about the formaldehyde and the diesel emissions. And so the, the formaldehyde was kind of, the comment was, was incorrect from the commenter, the formaldehyde. Sorry, just a second. That's not my dog.
We're in a public hearing, so we're gonna have to have you kind of move on here.
Okay. So that, let me move on to the diesel emissions. And so the diesel emissions analysis was incorrect. The, the closest receptor is extremely far away. It's almost a mile away from the, from the site. So South Coast Air Quality Management District doesn't even require any kind of health risk assessment, operational or construction based, to be done with anything that's less than 1,000 feet from the site. So it's not even required to perform that. So there would not be any kind of impact from health risk assessment wise from construction and the project does not attract any kind of heavy duty, heavy duty trucks such as with a lot of diesel emissions that would cause any kind of impact. And the methodology that was employed by the commenter was, it was incorrect. They used the, gonna get a little technical, the Calimod data from the air quality analysis. They did their own kind of air quality analysis and that's, that's a whole nother subject. But they used the incorrect methodology, so they would overestimate the health risk-related emissions. So that, it's incorrect. So the, the assertion that there's gonna be health risk impacts associated with the project are completely wrong. And the formaldehyde-related emissions, that's, that's regulated by CARB and it's using standard practices and there would not be any significant type of indoor air pollution associated with the project because it's already heavily regulated and so it's, it's really, it's a, it's a non-issue. So that's all I have at this time.
Thank you for your comments. Catherine, anybody on behalf of the applicant that would like to make any more comments on rebuttal or testimony?
That's it for us.
All right. Before I close the public hearing, does this council have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
Okay. You may ask a question at this time.
Yeah, I have some questions. So I went through its 2,800 pages. I go through, I see this DHS tax benefit analysis summary. I see we talk about a sales tax on products and it states 8%. Our sales tax is 7.75%. So it makes me wonder if there are other errors in here. For example, utility user tax is between now and 2020, which it is. And then I want to talk about this, the cannabis tax from the dispensary. You're estimating it's gonna be 1.8 million annually, which comes to 18 million in sales. So I, it says that that's a conservative figure and I know there's no one to compare. You only, you don't have any comparables, but I'm kind of curious as to where that figure's coming from since our top three dispensaries combined only bring in 11.7 million. So you're estimating you're gonna bring in seven more million in sales just in that alone. Can someone speak to where we get that figure?
Catherine?
We're happy to color that for you. So it's not just a regular dispensary. It's a touring and education dispensary. So it's not only just a walk-in, walk-out with cannabis products. There's an educational component with a miniature theater to give people a debrief on all things cannabis, the history of cannabis, hemp, kind of make it a museum. It's a full showcase for different cannabis broad supplies, like the picks and axes of cannabis, so that you can actually see how to grow the product. Folks will walk behind glass windows, floor-to-ceiling windows, and they can actually see a miniature or micro grow facility, a micro extraction facility and a micro processing and trimming area where they'll be able to intercom with all the different employees that are working in the facility and ask questions. And it's really more of an educational component. So that's where that's coming from. And on top of it, on top of the T and E facility is a restaurant.
Okay. But that's the cannabis tax. You're talking about cannabis sales alone, not the other tax. So that's one I'm a little, I'm questioning is, where's the 18 million in cannabis sales? That doesn't include tours or restaurant or anything like that. That would be in the other areas, I'm assuming. Or is that figure included in that?
That figure would be included in the draw that is caused by a hotel, 175 key-room hotel that comps would show is occupied 100% of the year at least 70%. And that comp is also allocated by all of the draw that would come from the brew house and T and E building of it on its own, in addition to the, the hotel. Additionally, the amphitheater that is before you in this amendment right now is another draw. If someone comes to a concert, they would absolutely stop by the other facilities right there next to it, located right on that Indian Canyon main corridor. there next to it, located right on that Indian Canyon main corridor.
Furthermore, all of the other dispensaries in your city are further away from the freeway, which causes less bystanders that are going through the Coachella Valley and not necessarily staying in the Coachella Valley, so we have a captive market in that sense, but other dispensaries in your city are not comparable in really any way, shape, or form.
Okay, thank you, just, so you mentioned seventy percent occupancy year-round, which is odd, but do you have any idea of, A, is it gonna be a like national chain hotel? Do you have an estimate of an ADR or your TOT, because you have all the other taxes estimated here, or have you not gotten that far yet?
The tax benefit analysis in front of you right now was prepared back when we originally started the project, and barely, I don't know which version is in front of you today, but that's not part of this approval, and frankly, is entirely irrelevant to what's in front of you today, is to approve the amendment of the specific plan to allow certain uses. So I appreciate the questions, I'm happy to answer them as soon as you would like to give me a full digest on which questions you would like answered, but they're entirely irrelevant to today's approval.
I will respectfully disagree, it is in the specific plan, and I can ask questions about the specific plan. I was just curious, because you've got figures in here that, from my perspective, don't necessarily add up, it's irrelevant from whether or not it applies to the specific plan, but it makes me wonder what else in here isn't gonna add up, that's all.
Do I have any other questions to the applicant?
The applicant.
The applicant. Okay, at this time, I thank you to everyone that gave testimony, I am going to close the public hearing, there'll be no more testimony. I will open up item number eight, which is the city council discussion and questions to staff, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I still have some concerns over the, the, the EIR for the environmental impact for the changes to adding the hotel and the, and the amphitheater. Rebecca, can you, what, what would, what would be the process of, and how long would it take for a, an EIR to address the specific concerns that were raised on that?
So whether a new MND or new EIR would be required, it would basically start the process again, and would trigger additional time. An MND usually takes somewhere between, you know, usually around a six-month process, where an EIR usually takes more like an eight-month to a year process, and that's assuming a, a very diligent applicant that resumits quickly after Redvine. When you do a new environmental, you trigger having to redo any kind of AB-52 or tribal consultations, redo the noticing requirements by sending it up to the state clearinghouse for comment periods, and things like that, so depending again whether it'd be an MND or an EIR, it would trigger those new timelines.
Okay, thank you. And further in that as well, the, the POA component in that, if, if, if I understand what the, what you're proposing is that you take the city out of the loop and not put us between the POA and the approval process of the city, correct?
Sort of. Basically, what staff feels is it's our job to do is review the project on the basis of the specific plan alone, and not ensure that the CCNRs are complied with, that is not the city's job. That, that agreement on the CCNRs and the property association and the owners are a private agreement between the two to ensure compliance. It is not the city's job to ensure that the project complies with those CCNRs, it is the city's job to ensure that the project complies with the specific plan and the building code. So that's what the, the city is recommending, removing that POA assurance, you know, there's even possibly some future concerns that if we were to issue a building permit, which the building permit code requires us to plan check it for building code, and then becomes a problem because we didn't get POA approval, it would possibly be an issue for us not to issue a permit when it meets building code, just because we haven't received POA approval, that that process by the state is, is intended to just review for building code. So again, staff is definitely recommending adding the condition that removes the city from that POA process between the landowner and the POA, and not, you know, relying on the city to ensure that they're complying with the, with that POA.
No, I, 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 I understand, like where you're at, it's like if in my own condo, and I decided to make an addition, and I applied to the city and got a proper permit, and then later on, the HOA said, oh, you can't do that, but it's not up to the city to overrule the HOA, that then becomes between me and the HOA, and for them to either take appropriate legal action or whatever, but that's between me and them and not between the city, so I, 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 I agree with that, I don't want to put the city in between the, the POA and, and the approval process. And I do have to respectfully say that, I have to agree with Councilmember Griffith, the, the tax study that is in there is, I, I don't know where some of those numbers came from, it makes no sense to me that, that some of those numbers add up to like that. Seventy percent occupancy year-round in a hotel, I don't know, even our biggest and best hotels in this town do not have a seventy percent occupancy year-round in that, and I don't know, you're, you're right, we add up all of the other dispensaries, we don't get the same amount of taxes we get from this one dispensary, I have, I have some issues with, with that, and so, while to that is part of the development agreement or not, it is something that is relevant for discussion, but that's all I have at this point, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, Mayor, I would like to add-
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to add that the con- Sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you guys.
Yeah, we're having some technical difficulties, go ahead, we can hear you.
Okay, I'd like to add that the, part of the requirements within the conditions of approval do require that the project applicant, as with any project, indemnify the city of any kind of environmental suit, so if this were to go to a suit process, the applicant would be required to indemnify the city and cover those legal costs associated with fighting any kind of suit against the city on this project.
And that is included in that, or is that standard language, or would you, that is already included?
It is standard language in our conditions of approval to indemnify the city.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we have no other questions from council, then I will enter-
I for staff.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
For the city attorney. Do we know when the NEXIS study is expected to be done?
I would have to defer to staff on whether, or what the timing of it, I know that we have already engaged David Towes and Associates to start working on it, but with respect to when it will actually be completed, I do not know.
Yes, staff is in fact in process of that diff update, we anticipate that it should be done by late fall.
Late fall, okay. So I, I want to ask a question here, so it is, I am not willing to waive, was it section thirteen, and we have been threatened with litigation if we do not, are we able to table this until the NEXIS study is done?
That is up to the city council, this is a legislative item, if you would like to continue this, you know, for a period of time until the NEXIS study is completed, that is completely up to the city council, there is no requirement that the city council must act tonight on this item, that I would defer to the city council if-
Okay, everybody please stop, I'm getting multiple signals because we can't get our technology right, so we're on a break.
This is irritating, need to figure it out.
They can't hear at all, I'm on it, just.
Some are smaller.
Did you manage that?
Oh, clearly, we had a miss.
Check, check.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm gonna make sure. Mr. City Manager, sorry, we're working through this. The system wasn't as I knew, so we're trying to figure out how to make this work, but we tested it, and it was working great, but to be fair, we tested it for thirty, twenty-five, thirty minutes.
You know it is, Mary's a little frustrated.
Okay, I just want to make sure you're, that you're aware, we're, we're working through these challenges.
There you go.
It's been a long day, and everybody's a little tired. I know Paul would snap his fingers like that.
You know, expecting you to jump, but you didn't.
All right, so let's see, I hear you, Mary just said I hear you.
Mics are open? Check, one, two, testing, one, two, three.
Enough, question mark. Tony, yes, a thumbs up, you can hear us? Okay, thank you.
Okay, good. I can't hear my mic.
All right, everyone on Zoom, if you can give me a thumbs up if you can hear us. Awesome, I got some thumbs up, good.
I'm gonna let Rebecca know that we're down.
We'll get Rebecca back on in a minute. Sorry about these technical difficulties, this is, it looks like it's a Zoom issue, not a, YouTube is, is streaming fine, as we hear, so if you are on Zoom and you want to pull up YouTube on your other computer, that might help with the situation.
Okay, we're back.
If there was any questions about comments from our council or staff, you can send in the chat, I believe to Ms. Cernick, she'll be able to see in the chat any questions that came up that you weren't able to hear, everything is recorded and will be able to be reviewed on our website, correct, Gerald?
Website and YouTube channel.
Website and YouTube, which did record everything clearly. All right, we'll reconvene the meeting, and I believe there was a question from Mr. Griffith to our city attorney, if you could repeat the question, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Yes, my question was, would, is it possible to continue this discussion until after the NEXIS report is done?
It is possible to continue this discussion and this hearing until after it's done, so that is definitely a possibility, should council wish to continue the item to, to that time.
Thank you.
Any other questions, yes, Ms. Pye?
I'm okay with the POA being in there, I don't have a problem with that, but I'd like to know, why are you asking about the NEXIS being delayed?
Well, we, we just got a threat of litigation if we approve this as is based on the fact that our NEXIS is not completed, and so I'm just looking at what options are best to protect the city.
Okay.
I just have a couple of comments before we entertain a motion, any more comments from the council. Ms. Deming, can you hear us okay? All right, good. Obviously, the applicants moving forward with this, they need it in a timely manner, I'm assuming, so us delaying it till after that NEXIS study is done is not gonna help their, their cause, correct?
So yes, they do have some projects that are processed right now under a temporary use permit, that would not be able to get their permanent approval until some of these changes are applied for. It would affect them, however, you know, that is up to the discretion of the council on how they would like to move forward with a specific plan amendment.
And so my suggestion would be that we move forward with some sort of motion here to, to complete this item, and if parts of that is something that that developer thinks they need to sue over, then so be it at that time, and we'll deal- then so be it at that time and we'll deal with it at that time. That's my suggestion.
One quick question again, Rebecca. If the developer does pursue legal action, maybe it's to you, Jennifer. If the developer does pursue legal action over the fact that the the diff nexus is not completed, does that then grind their project to a halt while that litigation is pending?
I would say most probably, and the reason why is it's a condition of the specific plan, so the entire specific plan, as I see it now, would be halted, the specific plan would be halted because the specific plan in itself would be subject to the litigation. That's kind of an off-the-cuff response, but I think that that would probably be accurate because the specific plan itself would be in question.
So let me get this clear one more time then. If they pursue litigation because we do not put in the language that they requested regarding the development impact fee nexus, and they choose to take litigation against us, then it would grind their project to a halt, which would then be up, that would be in their lap, correct?
That would definitely be in their lap, and again, that is kind of the best off-the-cuff response at this point.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I would move that we adopt the staff recommendations for item four, Clatchellon Specific Plan Amendments, SP-20-4, and mitigated negative declaration addendum, ENV-20-1.
Can we also introduce the first reading in the same motion or is that going to be separate motions?
Unless the city clerk had a preference to do both because I think one's an ordinance, so probably to do two motions. The first one would be the resolution, the second one's the ordinance, so he gets them read.
All right, I have a motion for the item nine, which is the resolution.
I will second.
I got that motion moved. I have it seconded. Is there any more discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion, item 10, which is introduce the first reading of the title only. So moved.
I have to record this manually.
We're moving the ordinance.
We're moving number 10, needs to come up on the screen.
Yeah, I need to record this manually.
Okay, all those, I'm sorry, there's a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes 4-0. All right, can we get Councilmember Betts back in the room? All right, as Mr. Betts comes back to the dais, we'll move to item number five, which is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, amending section 17.040.050, definitions of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code related to the certain housing definition and amending table 17.08.01 to amend certain housing arrangements uses. Ms. Demme?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item went to the Planning Commission at its meeting on August 11th and held a public hearing and recommended City Council approval as proposed. The municipal code regulates allowable uses and the definitions. Staff is recommending, in order to clarify that some of these definitions in our code, these updates, including the definition of density, making it very clear that group home falls under the supportive housing definition, clarifying residential care facilities that are commercial facilities for any number of people, whether set, whether under seven or over seven, clarifying senior citizen, aggregate care facilities, again, that are classified as supportive housing, or residential care facilities, depending on which zone they are proposing. Clarify senior housing and making it clear that senior housing is classified based on the definition of the type of housing, not the fact that it is senior housing in the terms of allowable land uses. As such, senior housing, that is, single-family dwelling, is classified as dwelling, single-family under the municipal code, and senior housing that is multifamily is defined as dwelling, multifamily, for purposes of the permitted uses in the municipal code. Updating to the social services facility, making clear that that is a non-residential facility as shown in the title, in the table, and making clear again on supportive and transitional housing, adding the note that the classification includes group homes, both large and small. It removes elderly and long-term care because that is covered under the other definitions, and with that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. We'll entertain questions of staff from council, Mr. Gardner.
Yes, Rebecca, real quick, these are just standard definitional changes that tie up now with changes to state law, is that correct?
It is not specific to changes in state law. It is due to some additional clarification that we wanted to include as issues have come up since the adoption of the updated zoning code just recently. So it's just additional clarifications.
And it helps us comply with our housing elements and the requirements for, particularly for ADUs, accessory dwelling units, things like that, for low income and other purposes, correct?
So basically, the issue is, we're trying to just make it clear, you know, it's... Supportive housing is a very broad definition under state law, and so we had a little bit of conflicting definitions like group home, where the definitions overlap. So we are trying to just remove overlapping definitions. The accessory dwelling unit is a separate item on this agenda, but this one just is really to clarify the different types of group homes and where they fit. If it's a group home, it falls under supportive housing, which is permitted by right under state law. And so we're just trying to add those references so that for people who may just be looking at our municipal code and not calling and asking questions, would hopefully be able to interpret the definitions a little bit easier than what we had before.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Pye?
In item seven, no passageway shall be required in conjunction with the construction of an accessory dwelling. However, if the dwelling... There's somewhere in here where if the dwelling does not have a kitchen or... It's a kitchen, I think. Then there needs to be a pathway to the primary house. So I don't understand item seven.
So as mentioned, the next item we'll be discussing is the accessory dwelling unit. I can get into that a little bit more. I think what you're referencing is the definition of other types of units that don't have kitchens that would not be considered a separate dwelling unit, but more like a guest room, and our codes would look at it differently than an accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you.
No one, yes?
Yeah, under item, section four, says if there's an existing primary dwelling, the total floor area of an attached accessory dwelling should not exceed 50% of the existing primary dwelling of 1,200 square feet, or whichever is less. The question is, is there a distinction between a attached dwelling and then a separate auxiliary dwelling unit that's, you know, not attached, is a casitas-type unit?
That would be a question for the next item, not the definitions.
Okay. I see that you called, all right, then I must be on the wrong item. Okay, got it. All right, so I'll save that question for the next agenda item, thanks.
All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing and take any public testimonies. Is there anybody to speak on this item?
No, there is not.
We'll close the public hearing at this time. Any more questions for staff? I'll accept the motion.
All right, there we go, it's up on the screen, do you want it? All right, well, it's waiting to come up the screen, I'll make the motion that we accept the staff recommendations on the change in definitions.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other comments, questions? Please vote.
Am I the only one?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. And this is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council, amending section 17.040.050, definitions of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code related to certain housing definitions and amending table 17.08.01 to amend certain housing arrangement uses. The ordinance will return on September 15th for a second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Item number six is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, amending title 17, section 17.08.170, related to the accessory dwelling unit to harmonize with state law. Ms. Demme?
Thank you, Council. This one was also, was at the Planning Commission meeting, it's July 28th meeting. They held a public hearing and recommended approval as proposed. This changes is to harmonize our accessory dwelling unit ordinance in harmony with the state law. So we are updating all the different sections that went into effect this year, specifically related to accessory dwelling units. It does have some new sections, including the addition for the allowance of junior accessory dwelling units. I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you have on the accessory dwelling unit requirements. And I just want to make clear that this is, most of it is word for word, the same as the state law requirements.
Thank you very much, Mr. Betts, you got a question?
You know what, it's answered, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Pye? Anyone else? All right, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Do we have any public testimony?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Close the public hearing at this time. Any more questions for staff? Entertain a motion.
I move we accept staff's recommendation to, regarding the accessory dwelling units, harmonize with state law.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, any other discussion? Please vote. Ms. Pye is having trouble again, that screen came up the same as last time. Gerald? There it goes. We're still missing Mr. Gardner. Go ahead, Gerald, with the reading.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. This is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council, amending title 17, section 17.08.170, related to accessory dwelling unit to harmonize with state law. And the ordinance will return on September 15th for a second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Move the administrative calendar, item number seven, proposed resolution, amending council policy procedures regarding commission appointments and proposed ordinance regarding commission appointment year. This is a subcommittee, Mr. Gardner and Ms. Pye, who's going to take this item?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is some further cleanup and clarification of both of our policies and procedures, as well as our ordinances. The first piece is something that we've developed following the extended process of filling a vacancy. And the question came up of what happens if, for instance, a member is unable to make an appointment. And so we are recommending that the council policies and procedures be changed to reflect the fact that if a member is unable to make an appointment within 60 days of a vacancy occurring, that the position would then, the appointment would then be given or reverted to the mayor or the mayor pro tem in the mayor's absence, subject like all of our other appointments are to the ratification by a majority of the city council. So if we, for instance, tragically lost a member or something to that effect and they were unable to make the appointment, then it clarified that the mayor or the mayor pro tem would be the person to make that appointment. The second piece of that is the change in our ordinances regarding the terms of commissioners on our boards and commissions. And presently, the previous structure was that the terms of the the two-year terms of the members of the commissions aligned with the election of members of the city council. So for instance, the election this year, then in January of next year, the council would appoint members for a two-year term that would then align with, again, the next following election. That's always been the council's practice. However, the ordinance said that, was written in a way, that the cycle was on the off-years when council used to have its elections prior to moving to the state cycle. So when an election was made in, let's for instance, say, 2015, the appointment would be made in 2016 and run through 2018. So this puts us on the cycle of the of the commission members being appointed and their terms are concurrent with the council members making the appointment. Did I confuse everybody to death on that one? So, okay. And the council, the subcommittee, Ms. Pye and myself recommend adopting these two pieces.
Thank you for the staff report. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Any council comments? Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I want to thank the two councilmembers on the subcommittee for digging into this. I think, you know, getting some of this stuff taken care of ahead of time before, raises a whole bunch of questions and so good digging in on this one, and this looks very good to me, so thanks.
Anything else? All right, entertain a motion.
Do we have to do this in two separate motions, or can we do it in one?
Do you think this one would be okay, taking one?
One, one's fine.
Okay. Then I move, then I move that we adopt the changes to the council policy and procedures, as well as the proposed ordinance aligning the terms of the commissioners to align with the council members' term.
Motion and a second on the table, I see no more discussion, please vote. Did yours go through, Ms. Pye? Did yours go through? Why isn't mine? It's weird.
Okay, I got it.
But now it's not showing on mine, it's showing defeated on mine. Mine says defeated. Why don't you go ahead and read the votes out loud?
Okay, motion passes unanimously. And then this is a first reading of an ordinance of the City Council, amending section 2.24.020 of the municipal code pertaining to the appointment of commissioners. The ordinance will return on September 15th for a second reading and adoption, and then the resolution is effective immediately.
Thank you very much. Move on to item number eight, which is to continue from our July 7, 2020 meeting, which is an appointment to the Planning Commission to fill vacancy for unexpired terms. At this time, Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After considerable deliberation and a lot of extra time, talking to all the applicants, reviewing their resumes, I think we've come up with an excellent nominee. I'd like to nominate Ken Anderson for consideration by the full council for appointment to the Desert Hot Springs Planning Commission. And made sure that Mr. Anderson is present. I see he's hung on through the entire meeting, so hello. And I think he's ready for any questions that anybody might have.
First of all, Kent, thank you for hanging in there. Thank you for your service on COP, and now you being appointed to the Planning Commission is just above and beyond service here. So let's get to the ratification process. Is there any questions for Mr. Anderson?
No questions, but one quick comment. I commend the council member for making a great appointment and for, Mr. Anderson, for enduring with us this entire evening. We've been watching you on Zoom. And again, I will reference to your service on COP. It's been much... It's been much preached. I'd love to see you stay on that as well. So thank you for that. And we'll move forward now finally.
Ms. Pye?
I just want to ask, does he know that this may only be for? Until January.
Mr. Anderson, did you hear the question?
I just heard the ordinance to pass.
So you understand your appointment would be through this, the rest of this year until January?
Yes, correct. I understand. I heard the ordinance that you passed.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second, please vote.
Congratulations, Kent. Oops, sorry. So let's wait for the mayor to say that. I can see the screen.
Mr. City Clerk? Mine's showing blanks, so.
Mr. Mayor, too, we can get this worked out. Would you like to go to roll call vote the rest of the night?
That's fine.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. City Clerk? Item passes five zero. Mr. Anderson, you can take the rest of the night off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, hold on one second.
No, no, no. You're fine. I just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for doing their job. They had about three or four meetings, but they attended each one. And I think we ought to give them accolades.
Absolutely. Being shorthanded there and getting their job done. So great job, Planning Commission. Move to item number nine, which is Eighth Street Drain Project Update. Mr. Porus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am going to share my screen. Can everybody see the screen?
Absolutely.
Perfect. So regarding the Eighth Street Storm Drain Project, this is simply an update, receive and file. And I'm glad to answer questions at the end of the presentation. The S U Storm Drain Project is generally on the Eighth Street between Mesquite Avenue and West Drive. The scope includes the installation of about three thousand eight hundred line of feet of various sized storm drains, multiple catch basins, inlets, laterals, and connector pipes, and obviously street repairs. The project limits are shown here in this exhibit. There are on Eighth Street, the finishing point to the west is West Drive. It crosses Cactus Drive, it crosses Palm Drive, and goes all the way past Mesquite. At each intersection, it goes beyond north and south and east and west. The scope of work is shown here in this exhibit. There are various catch basins installed at each intersection. Those catch basins are then connected with storm drain pipes and that convey the storm flow from the north all the way to the west to an existing underground box culvert. So currently, there is storm flow that sheet flows over the street from Palm Drive, from Cactus Drive, West Drive, Mesquite, and keeps flowing either south or on the surface of Eighth Street. With this project, the catch basins will catch all that water. It'll go underground in underground pipes. Those pipes will then connect to the underground box culvert and outfall into the original waterway that we have out in Little Rock Creek. This will help prevent a lot of the floods that we currently see during the rainy season farther south. And this will relieve a lot of our capacity that we currently have and overcapacity for some of our catch basins down south. Some project details. The lead agency on this project was Riverside County Flood Control. The city of Desert Hot Springs is still the final acceptance agency. This project was entirely funded, all design and all the construction through Riverside County Flood Control Regional Funds. The only fund the city of Desert Hot Springs will be paying will be the, any additional street repairs that the city requests. And we will be using diff storm drain funds which are available. The maintenance responsibilities. The city will continue cleaning out and maintaining the catch basins on an annual basis. And the Riverside County Flood Control will be in charge of maintaining the storm drain pipes under the street. The construction award. This project was advertised on newspapers, online databases, and on August eighth, there were thirteen bids received. Lowest responsive bidder was O Duffy Brothers Incorporated. And the total contract amount of three million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and ninety cents was awarded to O Duffy Brothers. There is a detailed bid results in the staff report. There were a lot of bids and it was very competitive, so it was actually a very good, very good awarding. Some schedules. We had a pre-con meeting on November seventh, twenty nineteen, and construction started on October thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Construction now is expected to end on October thirtieth of this year. This is tentative based on a contractor schedule for some additional grind and overlay that the city has requested to complete for this project. But we are expecting to finish about October thirtieth, twenty twenty. Here's some project pictures. This is some of the trenching, some of the heavy machinery that was used to not only cut the street but actually install the storm drain pipes. Here's the construction of some of the catch basins. And here's what it currently looks like with the catch bases completed and the temporary asphalt over the roads. There's no final cap yet, but that is next to follow. Some of the items that were found during construction, we did find some utility conflicts. Some utility lines were actually discovered under the road where they're not supposed to be. The gas company, Mission Beach Water District, the city and the county met. And we were able to resolve the issues, realign a couple of utility lines and use various sized storm drain pipes to avoid those conflicts. So that was an interesting task that we were able to handle. And another issue we had to handle was the temporary road repairs. Since this project was, it was three thousand eight hundred line of feet, it required a lot of construction from one side to the other side, to the middle side. What the contractor did was it saw the trench, it installed the storm drain, it backfilled, and then installed temporary asphalt. Now the contractor is going to go back, remove that temporary asphalt, install base material, recompact it, and install brand new asphalt. They're also going to grind and overlay asphalt areas that were no trenching to make the repairs from edge to edge of the pavement and to have ninety-degree straight cuts across the entire road for the entire project. The finished product and the project paving limits are actually shown here in red. And the R and eight street, they will cross all the intersections from West Drive, Cactus Drive, Palm Drive, and Mesquite, and will have straight ninety-degree edges and will go edge to edge. It would also be removing and replacing the AC burn that was completely destroyed on some of the sections. This is a receive and file. I'm glad to answer any questions. You may have. Thank you.
Before I get to any other council comments or questions, I just wanted to give a little bit more history on this. It's been a project that's been in work for many, many, many years. When our city manager was first hired, I took him to a meeting with our county supervisor and we talked. They were in the flood control was in the process of changing their staffing and who was the director at the time. And he was very receptive to our needs. Chuck, our city manager, put staff on it, Danny and others. And finally, after years and years and years, we're finally seeing this project, which is well needed for our community. It's, people don't realize how much water rushes through this community when it does flood. And we know it doesn't flood very often, but when it does, it wreaks havoc on our community with all of the destruction that the sides of our roadways end up having because the water isn't properly dispersed throughout our community. So kudos to staff for getting this done. I know the project isn't completely done yet, but we're looking forward to that very soon. Mr. Mayor, can I have Danny talk a little bit about what extra paving the city is required?
Yeah, so I can show you guys that I shared them. And so we have our, let me see if I can share my screen again. The project itself. There it is. So the project itself actually ends right underneath this, the underground box culvert where the open channel is. It does not extend all the way to West Drive. We were able to get the same unit price from the contractor and use the economy of scale. Were they able to reconstruct that entire roadway from that section, which is about halfway point between Cactus and West and extend it all the way to west, extend it on the north, the south, and throughout the intersection, also removing the asphalt berm on both sides and reinstalling a new one. The project itself originally only had half the street. Since the storm drain was on the south side of the street, it was only going to repave half of the street from Cactus to about Palm Drive. We are now adding the actually north side of the, north half of the street to be grind and overlaid so that way you have a complete paving project from one side of the way to another. The Mesquite section between Palm and Mesquite was going to be completely redemoted. What we added on those were the intersections to make sure we had a full, complete transition into the existing roadway. If not, it would have just had a straight cut. And there is some areas that needed some reconstruction that were already in bad shape.
Thanks, Danny. This is in response to the council's request of staff to ensure that when we do these projects, we complete an entire roadway pave and take on additional intersections that are close to the pave. I just want to make sure that the council understands this is in response to your request. Thank you for clarifying that. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Betts?
I just want to reiterate your comments on the amount of time this was. I think Anne Marie Galant was the city manager and probably predates either you and I getting on the council. And she was trying to get this through, but then abandoned it for some reason. So this is very welcome news to get this one in. It's taken a long time. On the paving, really, really happy to see that staff has taken this approach on this and that it's such an opportunity to go in and finish stuff off rather than leaving a half-done street. And I know we've got concerns over budget, but I'm glad that you're making that work and listen to the council on that one. Thank you. On the temporary asphalt, just, this is for the benefit of the public listening. Man, there've been a lot of complaints. People actually thought, you know, one of the complaints that came in was, well, that's the way they're going to leave the paving? And of course, that's not the way they're going to leave the paving. This will be beautiful. And I've explained that to them. I think next time, we might figure out if, what is it, O Duffy Brothers can figure out how to actually do a temporary paving job that isn't, you know, so rough, that was not good. But everything else here is really nice to see. And so thanks, staff, for the hard work in getting this one done.
Anyone else? All right, this is a receive and file. Thank you for the report. We'll move to the next item, which is item number ten, the Wardman Community Center and Pool Project Update. And again, Mr. Porus?
We're actually going to have Nick Hacker, our Polyworks manager, handle this one.
Thanks for hanging in there, Nick.
No, no problem. Let me share the screen real quick.
Nick, can I interrupt for a second? I'd also like to announce that Tony Fialdi, our architect on this project and the architect of this facility, is with us tonight. Thanks for hanging in there, Tony.
I think I shared the wrong one. Hold on. You guys see it?
Yes.
So since two thousand eighteen, the Wardman Community Center and Pool has been closed. All elements that caused the closure have been removed. On February tenth, twenty twenty, the city of Desert Hot Springs contracted STK Architecture to do the as-built and remove renovation design of the community center and pool. STK's scope of work included the following. Document and record all measurements of the building and pool. Create a rendering of the current building and pool. Create a rendering of the design, new building and pool, and develop an estimate of cost for construction. The following slides are going to point out highlights of the new design compared to the current conditions. So for the outside area, the current layout does not have ADA access. There's a chain link fence going around the pool with barbed wire. They have low walls and no poolside privacy. The new design will have ADA access, block wall with broad viewing areas, higher walls to prevent climbing and poolside privacy. Around the pool area, there's currently an outdoor lifeguard area, indoor showers, poor location for shade structure, and interior chemical room. The new design would be an indoor lifeguard office, outdoor showers, shade structures determined by shade study, enclosed exterior chemical and pump room. For the pool itself, the current layout has non-ADA access, a single corner entrance, and non-full pool use because of the deep end. The new design will have ADA access, a large entrance and exit, shallow sitting and play area, and full pool use. For the community center, the exterior has non-ADA access, single access to the pool area, and no shade cover. The new design will have ADA access in an outdoor ability and a shade cover. Inside the community center, the interior currently has exposed walls and ceilings, no interior restroom, and no HVAC. The new design, finished floor, ceilings, and walls, new restroom, new HVAC system, the kitchen, and a storage closet. The city requested that the project be separated into two phases. For the cost, it's interior improvements, including the, or sorry, exterior improvements, which includes the pool and interior improvements for the community center. The estimated cost for the exterior improvements is two million four hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. This includes all perimeter upgrades, restrooms, lifeguard office, pool area, pool, and pool equipment. The estimated cost for the interior improvements is three hundred one thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. This includes all interior upgrades, including the community center, such as the HVAC system, electrical work, bathroom installation, kitchen windows and doors. C staff is currently working on researching and applying for grant funding to fund one or more, or sorry, to fund one or both phases of this project. As funding becomes available, the city will have a shovel-ready project to begin and complete construction. Now we'll play the rendering. And we also, like we said, we have Tony here from STK to help answer any questions after the rendering. Hello?
Need to have some fancy music with this or something.
Well, for those of you on Zoom, I'm sorry, Nick, did you have anything else? Okay. With that said, for those of you on Zoom, we'll be doing a State of the City pretty soon. And we'll actually show a better video of that so you can get a better video of that. The only comment I wanted to make real quick was Ms. Williams and I were able to give a tour to Royal Emerald. And they verbally committed one million dollars to this project in twenty twenty-two. Obviously, we've got to work out an MOU with them, but on their program, which is youth, they felt this was something that was important to help donate to the community. So once we stabilize that MOU with them, we'll definitely thank them for that, that piece of it. Because obviously, we've got to go out and find a couple million dollars to do this. Yes, Mr. Gardner?
No, this is fantastic. And Tony and Nick, you guys both did a great job pulling this together. I wish that that video was shown on Zoom because I think our citizens will be overly impressed with impressed with the possibilities that exist up there. Unfortunately, with the degradation of that pool and the building and the ADA issues and the plumbing issues and all of the other things up there, we have to start almost from scratch, but what we've got here is an absolutely stellar project that will nicely complement the pool at Furby and give us a lot more recreational opportunities. And I'll echo the mayor's, a thank you to the good folks at Royal Emerald for being so generous in helping us get towards the point on this project, because if that million dollars brings us almost halfway there to covering that. So I'm confident that our staff has their grant-writing pencils out and is busy scribbling down grants and going wherever we can, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed for that. But I think within the next two years, we're going to see a completely revamped project there, and it's going to be absolutely fantastic. So thanks to everybody.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, that we will have that up on website tomorrow. They can see the entire video.
Yeah, so you can go to thecityofdhs.org, and you'll be able to punch on that video and watch it if you choose to. Ms. Pye?
I just want to say it's an excellent study and a good project, and as you said in your staff report, will be shovel-ready. I just want to know, are there going to be cameras?
Yeah, I think, I think talking with the city manager, we talked about security being one of the priorities here, both for the citizens and also for the structure and the asset itself.
Thank you.
If you want, I can see if I can share this screen and see if we can get it on here, if you guys want.
Could I jump in here? So the video actually did play on iCompass, and it is in the recording. It's only if you are a Zoom participant, which right now, I'm only seeing one. Is that right?
Mr. Betts?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's really nice to see this coming along. The pool has got quite a history in this city, including Frank Sinatra making a sizable contribution, along with Wardman, of course, and to getting this thing going. And way back then was community spirit to put this thing in and make it go. And then, of course, we know that one time, there was plans to turn the pool into a community garden and all kinds of other ideas, and we ran into financial trouble. Fortunately, we were able to keep that pool alive for three years through troubled times when the city didn't have any money to get private contributions to keep it going. And now, in that spirit, it seems we have another benefactor coming along to help bring this project along further. So the evolution of Wardman Park Pool is wonderful. What I would hope is that, you know, we see a beautiful rendering here, conceptual. At some point in time, whatever it takes for this thing to be, as they say, shovel-ready or grant-ready, I think we need to, I don't know what you need for the actual engineering to put this in place, whatever it is to make sure that we're ready to go, some opportunity comes along. And if we can leverage that private contribution, you know, for the match that the city would need, I would just encourage, you know, hey, you could wish everything happened quickly. This is a beautiful plan. We've got this building here. Our city manager is certainly capable of putting something beautiful together there. I just want to encourage that we get this thing ready to go, so if we can get this done as soon as possible. The pool's been sitting there empty for, what, two years now? And so anyhow, thanks for the effort on this. We've had many conversations on this one, and this is a good one to keep that conversation going. That's what I got. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you to everybody. That's a receiving file also, so we'll move to item number 12, which is Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, ABC, Alcohol Policy and Partnership, APP, Grant Proposal, and this is from our police department. Think I saw the chief on there. Chief, is this you?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. In March of 2020, the police department applied for a Department of Alcohol Beverage Control grant in the amount of $17,400 to finance several operations to spread community awareness as well as educate the public in issues related to underage drinking, as well as to identify problem locations. The police department was subsequently awarded a grant in the amount of $15,400. The City of Desert Hot Springs currently has 55 ABC licensed locations, of which 23 are off-sale and 32 are on sale. The police department is committed to enhancing and increasing their level of community outreach and enforcement regarding these locations. In addition, the department would like to increase community awareness as well as educate the public in issues related to underage drinking and identified problem locations. In order to help in this effort, the department applied for and was approved for the attached grant. The grant requires no matching funds and will help finance the following operations: three minor decoy operations, two impact operations, one shoulder tap operation, one undercover operation, one task force operation, as well as training on ABC enforcement, administrative process, and alcohol-related training. This grant will cover personnel costs to conduct these operations, as well as the equipment, vests, and iPads. There is no fiscal, I'm sorry, there is no fiscal impact, no matching funds for accepting this grant. I recommend the city authorize the city manager to accept a Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Alcohol Policing Partnership grant in the amount of $15,400.
Thank you. Do you have any public comments?
No, we do not.
All right. We'll move to council member comments. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Wait for the motion to come up. I think Mr. Serrano has it fixed now. All right, please vote. He took us out of the vote. Oh, there it is.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 13 is a discussion item. It's Assault and Sea Followup Resolution. Mr. Betts, I'll let you lead the discussion.
Yeah, about, was over a year ago, this council and every other council and the tribes in the Coachella Valley said that, you know, seawater import should be considered as part of the plan to restore the Salt and Sea. The group, the state agency or the state working group that's meeting, has seemed reluctant to push forward with even the consideration of that plan. If you, you know, participated in the meetings as I have, it comes up barely as an afterthought. That despite considerable expression by all the valley cities to make that part of the study. So what the citizens group basically, who's spearheading this, and they're doing a lot of good work, has, is now asking of this council is to make it more specific that $2 million out of the, I don't know how many hundred of millions of dollars it is that were originally allocated, that $2 million be used for a competitive engineering review of the ocean water import proposals being, once you have the engineering, then you can go ahead and do this. And just by quick background on where the Salt and Sea is right now, you see people saying, well, let's save the Salt and Sea. It's past that point. You know, the time to save the Salt and Sea was five years ago, because even this engineering study and everything else, to get this thing back to any type of plan is years in the making. So this has got to be done. And so anyhow, the plan is to go around to all of the same entities, and indication is that, you know, we won't be the only city. We'll probably be unanimous again to go forward with this, and I think Coachella has already moved ahead and passed it. So my recommendation and hope with this council will put a little bit more emphasis into our prior resolution and towards at least considering this as an option with the recommendation of engineering money be spent.
Is that a motion?
Actually, I got to do public comments first. Is there any public comments?
We did, but they are not online.
Okay. So a question from Ms. Pye, is that a motion to place it on a future agenda?
That'd certainly be a motion.
Second.
Second, is there any more discussion?
Do a roll call.
Roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item passes. We'll move to future agenda items, as you can always speak with those, with the city manager's office and/or give another council member a call to put on an agenda. Do we have any final public comments?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you to everybody for your patience tonight and my non-patience tonight. With that said, we're adjourned.